Hello, everybody. We're about to start a Freeport City Council meeting here in about eight minutes. So it's gonna be a good meeting. We've got a lot of good things that we're gonna be speaking about. So, uh, welcome. The Detroit, you know, is Jerry's daddy was Mason?
I did not know that. I did not know that.
Four more minutes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regularly called, uh, meeting, scheduled meeting for Freeport City Council this Monday, November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one at six P. M. Uh, I will declare that a form is present. I would declare that all the proper notices have been posted and given, and that this, uh, this session of council is ready to go. Uh, with that, I see Andy Dill, uh, back there, who is a preacher. I'd ask that he would please rise and from in a loud distinct voice give us an invitation. And Mr. Kelty will lead us in the pledges.
Let's power it up. Heavenly Father, we thank you for just the great gift of being able to live together in community. God, we acknowledge that there are challenges. We acknowledge that we need your wisdom, and so we ask for your wisdom upon all our leaders. We ask for your blessing. We ask for your grace and concern on all those here, those who are new to this community and those whose groups run deep. God, be with us wherever there is disagreement. Let us do so without discord. Keep us wise. Keep us graceful. And keep us with the love of Christ. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. Yeah, maybe that was a mistake to give a preacher a chance to preach in this church for five minutes. I'm trying to give my lawyer a microphone, so. All right, uh, this particular time, we have citizen comments, and ladies and gentlemen, uh, we have a lot of citizen comments, uh, some that will be during this time period because they're not specific, and others that are specific as particular agenda items. Therefore, I usually am a little lenient on the four-minute time, but with as many as we have tonight, we will be sticking to the four-minute time limit as approved by council, uh, June twenty-first of two thousand and ten. Uh, so with that in mind, Mr. Stumball, you are a general speaker. Please approach.
Is it working? Oh, it is. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. My name is Keith Stumball.
Good evening.
I have been a Freeport resident for over fifty-six years. I have previously served on the Freeport communication committee, historical board, Main Street committee. I've also recently served on the planning committee and currently serving on the Freeport Board of Justice. At the last Freeport City Council meeting on November first, two members of the EDC, including the EDC president and chairman of the planning commission on which I served, were removed from their positions by a three-to-two vote of this city council. On November third, FACS newspaper article reporting on their removal, they're accused of abusing their positions on EDC boards undermined development initiatives within the EDC, creating a dictatorial board that punishes any member for wasting ideas that challenges their own, wasting EDC funds, and acting against the board's majority input and procedures. All this without any specific details about these accusations being provided, and both dismissed committee members deny the accusations. This seems much more like the case of differing opinions on certain issues than of actual wrongdoing. I find it disturbing if this act was taken without any attempt being made in good faith to resolve these issues among the committee and board members before city town council took action. Mayor Bass hit the nail on the head when he told the FACS reporter that he believed the commission should have had a chance to work things out themselves before the council stepped in. People need to work together. There is a process for that, he went on to say. I couldn't agree more. I love Freeport, and I have put much effort over the years to improve this city, but I refuse to serve a city government which targets members of city committees with removal just because their opinions on certain issues differs from those of certain city council members. I refuse to remain in a position where I can be also targeted for removal if I express an opinion differing from that of certain city council members. I therefore resign from all city committees effective immediately until and unless city leaders can find a way to try and make good faith efforts to work out issues with those who have different opinions. My decision will not change. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Reyna, you have a open comment?
Mayor, council, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is, uh, Sam Reyna, and I reside at two thousand and two North Avenue Chief. Ms. Nicole Miguez was removed from the planning and zoning commission, and the city council can do that at will, and we saw cause. But there always has to be a reason why, especially against the name of her term. Melanie Oldham filed a complaint that Nicole had improperly conducted her business. Melanie wanted to table the election of function until the next board meeting. There was formally placed a vote mistaken, and the board remained the same. Pastor Andrew Dill called Nicole the day after she was removed and stated in which he is his supporter. Nicole told Pastor Dill that Melanie wanted to nominate him as the chairperson. Pastor Dill then Melanie approached with that idea, but he declined. Four of the five board members approved of Nicole being chairperson, and all four thought they had a free vote. City council members did not contact any of the planning and zoning board members to verify that Melanie's complaint was true, except for Councilman Troy Bremish. He did make contact. After the October eighteen council meeting, Councilman Mario Moraria called me and wanted to meet with Mr. Edward Garcia and Nicole Miguez. He wanted their support in improvement, the construction of multicultural center and the whole community house site. Edward and Nicole told him that that was prime real estate and a preferred independent chamber counter as a nonprofit organization and would not be paying taxes. They might consider another location, but not that. The following council meeting, Mr. Moraria voted to remove Peter Garcia and Nicole Miguez.
Thank you, sir. The remainder of the citizen comments will be, uh, pulled out individually, uh, for the agenda item as it approaches. Uh, with that, now we have the presentation of employee for the month, and wow, we have a crowd to celebrate this employee.
Mayor, council, residents of the city of Freeport, this is something that I always look forward to, and, uh, this individual here tonight is not aware that they are actually being recognized, but, um, I would like to have, uh, our new building official, Casey Roman, come up to help present this. Ms. Roman nominated this individual as employee of the month, and employee of the month is important, uh, because of the fact that we like to recognize employees that, uh, not just do their job well, but actually go above and beyond in service to the public. Um, so with that being the case, um, Yvette, will you come up? I'll be here what, uh, Ms. Roman has said about Ms. Ruiz. She says, "Yvette is our planning and zoning coordinator and assists customers at the firming desk. She's bilingual and often helps other departments and staff by translating." Yvette takes the initiative to hand deliver all packets to board members prior to meetings to ensure that they receive the information on time and can take action, um, after understanding whether it could be considered. A few weeks ago, this is, by the way, for the month of October that she's being recognized. A few weeks ago, there was an upset young lady at the front counter. This is at the utility counter. Um, she could not afford to pay her water bill. Yvette reached into her own purse and paid for the lady's water bill. Um, it's something that is, um, not common for residents, excuse me, for city employees actually to care that much, and so it's important that we recognize her. Her customer service and gracious gesture gestures is just one of the reasons why we're grateful to have Yvette as part of the team and one of the reasons why I'm proud to have her as employee of the month for the month.
Thank you, Yvette. I tell you, that, uh, that showing of compassion, uh, is amazing. Thank you, man. Thank you, Eric. Thank you, too. Uh, at this particular time, I'm gonna dig deep just for a minute, um, and not put him on too much of a spot, but one of our council members, Jared Kane, uh, loves his pop-up, uh, last week, James Ivan Dewey Kane. Uh, I got to meet Mr. Kane on your last campaign trail, and, uh, we had a lot of stories about his long-horns and my aides, uh, but I will tell you, while I did not know Mr. Kane, I know his son, and I believe that children can be mirrors of their parents. And so while I didn't know him, uh, you are a very good man, and he must have been too. So we all wish you the best in a certain prayer for your family. Uh, gentlemen, uh, on the next item is the consent agenda. Items two through five. Number two is consideration of possible action on approval of city council meeting minutes from November first, twenty twenty-one. Number three is consideration for road closure for the MLK parade on January seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. Number four is the consideration of possible action approving the Resort County Firefighters' Association Annual Fire Protection Agreement. And number five is consideration of possible action approving the mayor to sign the annual storm water report. Once again, this could be done in one motion, if that's what I'm hearing.
Mayor, I've had an opportunity to review, uh, the motion that we accept, items two through five of the consent agenda.
A motion from Councilman Bremish to accept included consent agenda items two through five, is there a second?
A second.
We have a second from Councilman Kane. All those that voted said aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion period. Thank you. Next, going to council, uh, business regular session. Item number six is consideration of possible action on ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash two six five one to authorize the placement of speed bumps in certain segments of streets in downtown and an ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash two six five two reducing speed limits for certain segments of Second Street, Broad, Park Avenue, and Naniqui Lane. Uh, Ms. Morales, the viewer, uh, lists on agenda item number six is wanting to speak. The mic is yours now.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Councilwoman, ma'am. Uh, one of the questions I have on this, do we even have that much traffic downtown? That's, to me, is silly. Been here sixty-eight years. I never, even when it was back in the days, you know, people don't drive through there like mad. I mean, why do we need bump, uh, speed bumps over there? I'm just saying, that's a waste of money, as far as I'm concerned, and, um, did you, did this go through, did they do a study on this? The question I have. Have they done a study?
What, once you get through with your comment, citizen comment, we'll let you address those questions.
Okay, that's what I want to know.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. All right, Ms. Penney, this is an item that you requested only again to serve.
Yes, thank you. Um, we definitely have the map that Mr. Kelty had presented, um, and his offices that are together. So this park, this area is downtown Memorial Park. So number one, it is an actual park. It's designated a park. Two, it's been sixty-eight years where the, the traffic and the flow of traffic through it, um, has been neglected. And I will say that you can look at the minutes in the previous meetings that I had been here, um, being to the attention of speed violations, stop sign, be in run, and, um, basically, uh, you have trucks from the port also trafficking through the, uh, the park streets, and it's a short district. And, um, I brought it to the attention of the council. We've had Chief Bear Bay, the patrol unit downtown, to help curb some of the, uh, the activity, the illegal driving activity, and it has, uh, not been brutal enough, um, just the content approach looking at it. And so I, I, this content approach looking at it, that number one, we have the museum, which we are putting in a lot of money and energy, and we're having events scheduled for the next coming year where families and children will be visiting the city, and the park will be utilized, and that much more. Beach House Arcadia, as you all know, is a little, uh, game room and, uh, pool hall and arcade and pizzeria. And the thing about that particular place, as many of you guys know, um, they are doing a really great job of hosting children's birthday party. And in fact, I believe Councilman Kane held a birthday party there earlier this year. And I believe also, um, some of the residents here, I've seen on Facebook coaching, that they visited with their children and with their grandchildren. So needless to say, the, uh, the park downtown is, um, is increasing with, uh, foot traffic and pedestrian traffic, mainly children as well. And, um, so I brought this to, uh, Mr. Kelty's attention and to the council's attention to consider, and I actually had a whole bunch of other speed bumps, but, uh, Mr. Kelty cleaned it up and said, hey, this is probably gonna be the best place for them to maximize the effect, the effectiveness of the speed bumps. And, um, so he brought that up, and then he also recommended that we lower the speed limit. And, uh, there was some legal leave behind it, and I'll let Mr. Duncan describe those in greater detail so that the council can discuss. Again, I don't bring this up, uh, you know, just without any true serious consideration for the best for Freeport here or downtown, for the safety of our, our families, our children, and our guests and their children. So, uh, as always, uh, I, I wanna make sure that we at least hold it up to discussion. And if it makes an sense to everybody throughout the discussion to make a motion to actually enact this, then, uh, we will move accordingly, as what the law allows. Thank you.
All right, they're good, and it's my understanding, or my, my belief, Mr. Kelty, was there a traffic study or a traffic survey done on this west?
There was not a traffic study done in this area, um, regarding speeds. Um, and I did find out from Mr. Duncan, after the planning commission had the discussion regarding the speeds, that legally you can only lower it to...
All right, so the, so the rule I have is that, um, legally you can only lower the speed limit to twenty-five miles per hour, uh, if that's in the, inside city limits, and it is less than four lanes, uh, so which looks qualified. I think the current speed limit is thirty miles per hour. Mr. Kelty thought there might be a way that you have a, could create a ten mile per hour street in or around parks, because there is a park there, um, but, uh, that was, uh, that's not the case. So the, the lowest that we could go, uh, would be twenty-five, from thirty to twenty-five with regard to changing the speed limit, and that does not require a traffic study to lower to twenty-five, uh, inside city streets that are less than four lanes. If it's greater than four lanes, uh, then you would have to have a, a traffic study. Um, we did, uh, look at the different options just to present them to council. Uh, so one option would be to decrease the speed limit from thirty to twenty-five. Uh, also, council would be able to, if they so desire, to, uh, put speed bumps in the road. Uh, that's allowed, um, but that's up to the discretion of the council.
I think there might be one other option, um, although it's kind of extreme, and that would be, um, for instance, on, on, uh, Park Avenue and Naniqui Lane, if those were streets were abandoned as public streets and made private, uh, basically private roads owned by the city, um, although I don't know how that would, the jurisdiction, uh, then would be enforced.
Yeah, and another, I guess, we were, I'm in with Mr. Kelty, and we were talking about the, all the options and trying to discuss the legalities. Uh, another issue that came up is possibly in the future, although it's not on the agenda today, so the council could not take action on it today, but it would have to be on a future meeting if it was properly noted on the agenda. It's another possible ability would be to make west, east and west park streets downtown pedestrian streets and, uh, no cap traffic so that, hopefully, if there's further development downtown and we have more people walking around, uh, at the park, that that could be another possible action.
The reason why I had suggested, to Councilman Penney, about the reduction of speeds, because when he asked about the speed bumps, was concerned about, you know, if the speeds are thirty miles an hour, a car traveling across the speed bump has to be able to do so safely, um, and I know that normal speed bump, you'll, you'll pair it up. Um, now, they do have speed bumps that are allowed for higher speed traffic, uh, but I don't know how expensive they would be if we left the speed at thirty miles an hour. We weren't able, didn't have time to explore that option.
Mr. Kelty, uh, did this go to the planning commission, and what was their opinion?
Yes, the planning commission actually discussed this whole concept about speed bumps and, um, the, the reduction of speed limits, and they, they were not in favor of the speed bumps, but they did, uh, recommend reducing the speeds. Um, I think the ten miles an hour on park and Naniqui Lane and twenty miles an hour on second and broad, but again, um, under current...
There's legal provision on that.
Mr. Kelty, I may interject to state that actually the planning commission had said that they, um, wanted those, uh, speed reductions, but they didn't say they didn't want the speed bumps. They said they wanted to look at the price for what it would cost to, uh, uh, either do the six-inch, uh, two-speed bump or the elongated speed bump, uh, of the city. Is that right?
Yeah, they did. There was, there was some discussion, um, I think that there was, there was opposition to this speed bump idea, but they did not vote on it. I did ask for additional information, um, and more opportunity to look at further.
Very good. Mr. Mayor, if I may, I, I just wanted to add that, um, a municipal park here downtown, right outside our doors here, behind the library, has ten mile per hour, uh, speed limit.
has ten mile per hour, uh, speed limit on this park. And, uh, we all know that our children use this space, our visitors use this space, our residents use this space, um, uh, for, for many events and for that matter, just for their own leisure. And, uh, I'm not sure that a study was done, uh, but I'm sure that a lot of common sense was used when they applied those speed bumps. And I'm hoping that we can do the same for downtown and any other park space. Thank you.
Very good. Uh, council, do you all have any questions or is there a form of motion?
Uh, I've got a comment. Personally, I, I do not spend a whole lot of time downtown in this area. If in fact, in chief, I think everybody may be able to shine some light on this. If in fact, the, the speed of the vehicles traveling in this area is an issue, uh, keep in mind, changing the speed limit from thirty to twenty-five isn't going to do anything. They're going to blow through a thirty mile an hour speed limit, they're going to blow through a twenty-five mile an hour speed.
Well, I, I will say the, uh, police, uh, vehicle that is down there, uh, did work Sunday. My wife and I were traveling up behind the street bridge and she was driving and exited there on that street. Oh, my God, there's a police officer. I didn't know that. That it was not occupied. She's standing on the rest and we slow down, she spoke that. Appropriately, and that certainly doesn't need to be in the... With, with that in mind, uh, are there any further questions or comments, council, on, uh, number six? And/or I will entertain some type of action.
When we, when we have, uh, events for the museum, don't we close the streets down there? Didn't we close the streets when, uh, Arcadia had their event down there? I can't see spending ten thousand dollars on a speed bump that, I think Jeff, you might be one of the only ones that travel down there. But I, 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 I can't see it. And I think this is just like other stuff that we've got on the agenda, we feel up here and try to approve it without any, any research or any, any, anything into it. Just, just prove it, because it's on the agenda. I disagree with it.
All right, we hear your disagreement, uh, or any other comments on this? Mr. North, I will serve your hand in motion.
I have a question for you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Was that the first time your wife drove downtown here recently? Because that's what the real, what I'm going on there, and I'm not trying to be cute, because I know Steph, he's a good driver and I know he has a lead foot. But I will say, for all those that do use that route on a daily basis, business owners and property owners downtown, know that there are certain vehicles that keep repeating that pattern, that go down those roads, keep people here every day. And so for those, yeah, if you have it down there, you're going to get spooked. But that's not the problem, the problem are those who actually know that it's the point.
Very good. Thank you, sir. All right, so, uh, last call.
A question.
Question, yes, ma'am? If you would please, I feel I have a form.
Yes, yes, yes. One gentleman, um, Queen Dancy, First Street, I mean, yeah, um, Front Street.
Front.
I don't remember where I live, okay.
Queen, Queen of Front.
Yeah, right. My question is, because I do drive downtown a lot, I drive all around the city. And, um, actually, Jeff, I really don't, during the day, I don't see the traffic. Now, I'm not there in the evening. And I don't know if, if you're speaking about maybe, um, bad activity traffic. That would be different than just regular traffic. So, if that's the case, then that would be an issue with law enforcement. But I also have a problem on Front Street, you know, and that speed bump money could really help me out on Front Street with my damage. Thank you.
We appreciate that, thank you. Be sure and fill out your form, please, and have it turned in. All right, council, any direction on y'all's position? Here and now, I will move on to item number seven. So, therefore, uh, faith puts that the record reflects that we, uh, have passed six and we're on to seven. There's a difference between passing and tailing, so I want to say pass. Number seven, now, I guess you gotta be careful saying pass, I think the pass is approved, so Jeff can approve and not approve. So anyway, we're going on. Number seven, consideration and possible action, approving ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash two six four seven for budget amendment number one for fiscal year twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two. Kathy.
Good evening, ma'am, council.
Good evening.
Before you, you have budget amendment number one for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. What this is, is for the projects and personal things that did not get completed in fiscal year twenty twenty-one. So, in order to complete those projects, we need to roll that money into this year's budget because we have outstanding urgent orders, we have outstanding contracts and projects that we did not allocate, spend all the money that we allocated for that project, and we're going to roll those funds. That's what this is doing. One of them is for, like, for our administration, we need to recodification. We have a fire alarm that went down as part of, when Hurricane Nicholas came through, that has, we have a P O four, but we haven't actually completed the replacement. The fire department, they ordered the new parking costume, but it hasn't come in. Um, emergency management, there's still some engineering that's being, possibly being done. Some of the R V stuff that we still have allocated and we're working with FEMA to get completed. Um, streets, common station on Avenue A. Um, parks, the replacement of trees, park equipment and a fire alarm. At one of the facilities, streets and drainage, the role of street pay, uh, street paving and repair projects, that is in Fund fourteen, which is the Streets and Drainage Fund. We did not spend all the allocated funds in twenty twenty-one, so we're reallocating to spend those funds in twenty twenty-two to operate this.
We've still have outstanding contracts for this.
Yes. Um, facilities and grounds fund unfinished projects. The fire station had some things that were still going on, vehicle and equipment fund. Um, the two, the police cars that we had allocated to purchase last year, they came on October fifth. So we are wanting to roll those funds from that fund to pay for those cars this year. Again, Information Technology Fund, we haven't completed the migration of the financial payroll utility billing software, so we need to complete that. Um, in the utility fund, you had C D B G project that was not complete for the bar screen. And then the, the two bond funds, there was unfinished projects that have contracts from engineering and have less than the contract. That's what this budget amendment is for, is to finish the unfinished projects in twenty twenty-two.
And there will no, there will not be any new financial consequences for this fiscal year other than moving those money to our credit.
No, because what happened is at the end of the year, all that money went into fund balance, we're just reallocating, we have a fund.
And do we have a, uh, projected time on when the migration of the, the integration of the technology?
The, the financial software is already complete, we completed that portion in July. The utility billing, we have a meeting this week to do the demo again for the new employees that we have. And then we're scheduled to begin pooling information in December and January. Our goal line is end of February for the February billing, and then we'll fall into March. And then after that, we'll do the fourth.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, there is no financial impact, there was entertaining motion.
Mayor, make a motion that we approve ordinance number two zero two one dash two six four seven for budget amendment.
All right, we have a motion from Council Bremich to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash two six four seven. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a second from Council McCain, any further discussion? All those who voted say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carried, thank you, gentlemen. Item number eight, consideration and possible approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash two six four zero, approving short-term rentals. Uh, Ms. Diane McLeeser. In the middle, Mrs. McLeeser's coming up with, uh, number six, just put it on there, there's no action taken.
Good evening, Mayor, and City Council.
Good evening.
My name is Diane McLeeser, I live in ninety-seven Dalton Lane in Bridge Harbor. I'm here to ask the City Council to approve agenda number three nine. A few friends and neighbors are here tonight to support the enactment of the short-term rentals ordinances. We wanted to be here, some wanted to be here but couldn't due medical issues or other commitments. Other cities are taking actions to help their residents. Galveston has created a new zoning designation called R O, Restricted Residential. The, this designation does not allow any short-term rentals and has been enacted in over ten neighborhoods. Per an article on visit, Galveston website, short-term rentals increased from two thousand two hundred and seventy, Galveston, April eleventh, two thousand nineteen, to five thousand two hundred and three by August sixth, two thousand twenty-one. The article also mentions that only thirty percent of registered short-term rentals are owned by residents or businesses in Galveston. Majority are non-Galveston short-term rental property owners that have lived in or around the Houston area. Five percent do not even live in the state of Texas. Now, the ninety-five of registered short-term rental owners are businesses. Over the last ten years, Galveston has lost over eight hundred families. Nearby cities have seen gains in their population. Most people are living, leaving the island and commuting to work on the island. The rise in the number of short-term rentals is occurring at the same time housing prices have increased and rates have increased. The rise, the rise, raising the cost of living for residents, according to the Harvard Business Review. The increase in short-term rentals has led to increased complaints in the, uh, city of Galveston. As a result, Galveston City Council has considered proposing the city marshal of eighteen new deputies, which is going to cost the city about three point two million dollars. Freeport should act now to prevent the problem of neighborhoods becoming unsafe party venues. Does Freeport want to become another Galveston or Surfside? Run locals out of, out in the view can make a large sum of money from rentals. What these ordinance do is keep a family active there with, without a party venue. A Galveston teacher stated, "A vacation home takes away from the community spirit and a sense of ownership." A neighborhood needs to have a real identity, and we're losing that in Bridge Harbor. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Harris?
Good evening, ma'am, council.
Good evening. I'm Will, thank you, yourself.
Good, thank you. My name's Donna Harris, and my husband Jeff and I have lived in Bridge Harbor since twenty twenty. We retired last year. Uh, although we've owned our home as a second resident since two thousand seven, but we originally built the house. The neighborhood was most of a single-family, occupants in full-time will become residences. Today, it's unfortunate to say that the number of uncontrolled short-term rental properties has changed the sanctuary of a peaceful, tranquil fishing harbor that we enjoy living in. Rent is arrived late at night, often four to five carloads of Lao people. They bring their kendo machines to play on the deck. They smoke their cigarettes and throw them in the canals. They trespass on our property. They fish, they bait cats, they crab, and they tie up their boats to our dock. They run over our lights, they damage our bulkheads. They often show no regard whatsoever for respectful behavior in a normal, quiet residential neighborhood. The owners care only about making money. There's few, if any, house rules. They leave their trash can out for a whole week. They, they don't maintain the property, they don't maintain their bulkhead. The bulkhead is eroded and broken and is causing soil to enter into the coastal canal, including eroding and damaging our property as well, which is neighboring the rental property. When our neighbor first mentioned the issues that she was having to her home, we were not affected. It is unfortunate that recently we have also had an out-of-town short-term owner, short-term rental owner, own property next to us, so we now suffer in the same thing as our other neighbors are doing. Today, we're here to ask for your understanding. We are asking you to vote, uh, wholeheartedly to agree that the council adopt proposed ordinances in order for us to restore our quiet residential community and help with some of the problems that we're having in our neighborhood. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Welcome to the community. Yeah, mister, and I, I do not want to get this wrong, but I will, is it Gary Gerary?
Perfect.
Is it, well, you, you signed up for number nine, but I think you probably want to talk about eight.
Well, yes.
Or maybe both.
Um, my name is Gary Gerary. I've been a resident of Bridge Harbor for twenty-one years. I've seen a change over that time. And I guess the, uh, clarity I'll bring to this is that it's really lost a lot of its homeliness. I come home and the renters that are next to me, I'll like walk their dog in my property, they'll pick up big tiger dog up underneath my house. I have to go and politely tell them that they're owning that part of the property. I've had them come over and jump off my bulkhead into the water. I have to explain to them that there's water shells all over the outside and that fun didn't have the canal. But, uh, I think from a city's perspective, and as before, I know you don't want to get involved in the legality of this, but a lot of these units don't need the fire conduits, they've been modified and putting people in harm's way. And so it's my poly life and probably also to them to make sure these places stay a little safer. Because if one of those catches on fire, God forbid, someone's going to get hurt, they're going to sue whoever they can. But for deep pockets, then they're going to look at, where are the code violations? It's possible to say, why wasn't it enforced? So I just think everybody needs to think about that in line of approach of the potential liability the city must get out of hand. And I've said before in the meetings, we're calling the police a lot, and it kind of takes up their time. And, you know, I, I've got no problem with people having down there partying, but when it goes around all three in the morning, I can't sleep. I have to work, and I need my sleep. Really wearing it down, it's like a shame. Get there, I don't care if it's a smoking pot, and I go through the window, see if it's already go off tape. I don't care what they do, they're in a time of flames or quiet, and I don't want them to catch on fire. So that's just my two cents, I thought of bringing that out, and I really hope you guys can move towards pushing regulations on the homes and possibly also, uh, police the short-term rentals such that we're not in a situation.
Thank you, sir. All right, council, uh, this is consideration and possible approval of ordinance number twenty-three one two six four zero, approving short-term rentals. Are there any questions or comments?
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve ordinance number two zero two one two six four zero, approving short-term rental. What else?
All right, we have a motion to approve that particular ordinance, is there a second?
A second.
We have a second from Council McCain. Uh, any further discussion?
Yeah, I had a question. Would it interfere? I, I know there's a section here that talks about, uh, noise or sounds. Would it interfere with our no- noise ordinance? Because I think it, it's talking about how, uh...
This has specific sound, uh, provision in here. Mr. Duncan, uh, do you have an answer for Councilman Ryan? Because there is a standard clause that if there's anything that's determined to, to necessarily be ambiguous across, that it will certainly cancel each other out. Make sure we're good.
Yeah, so the, um, I have to pull up the work this year, because I don't want to, I don't want to back. Um, there is a different rule, you can have more than one rule, uh, with regard to, uh, noise complaints actually that's common. Have, uh, different rules regarding, uh, from location to location or different time restrictions. So you, you can make more noise during the day, less noise during the evening hours. Uh, so, uh, I did look at that when we had these noise, uh, restrictions put on the short-term rentals, and they will not conflict with our existing, uh, noise ordinance for other situations.
Can I ask you a question, council?
Yes, sir.
Any further questions, comments? Yes, sir.
Um, I think at the last meeting, there was a, uh, resident that made, uh, during public comments, um, a statement that mentioned that in fact I am a short-term rental owner, and that I had figured that out of self-interest. That is untrue. The truth of the matter is is that I wanted to, um, put some eyes on it and study it to see what the proven set of all was. Now, I will say, Galveston and Freeport are two different towns. Um, when we talk about sales tax and where the direction of the city is going, I don't think anybody wants to keep the city as a fishing tranquil harbor. Um, that is not what the master plan has for the city of Freeport, and that is a, uh, a study that we spent over, you know, several hundred thousand dollars, um, getting that information right. And so, you know... And so, you know, Galveston is different from Freeport. Ward A is different from Ward B. The riverfront is different than the beach area. The riverfront here on the East Hall Park is also different from Bridge Harbor. Bridge Harbor has also been known as a resort. I know that they have Captain Ken's or Ken's table now over there, and I also want to let the council be aware of that. The EDC has been looking at some of those properties on that side to help attract some development, residential development, and also for commercial development, in particular, some hotel space. So I want to make sure that we're cautious about this. I want to make sure that we are cautious about how we approach and how we move forward in any ordinances that we pass that might actually set us back financially or for that matter strategically. And when I say strategically, I mean, does that fit with the strategic plan that we have? And one of the things that I was hoping to do here before we got in here tonight was get the information in terms of a percentile. We, I know everybody likes to get everybody's two cents on this, and certainly we've heard from the residents, and I applaud them for coming out tonight and participating in the Act of Democracy and free speech and sharing their thoughts on that. That's always encouraged, that Lady Mayor Deal has encouraged that, and it's always appreciated. That said, I'd like to see if we can get some additional information from Mr. Kelty to find out the percentages of ownership. I don't know if we, do you have put any cell phone?
Mr. Har, continue. He's my neighbor, he gets attention. Who there is going to give you attention?
I'm right down the street from you, sir. And deserves respect.
Yeah.
All right, we're good, counsel. Go ahead, sir.
So I would like to request that we get some additional information in terms of who is, what is the percentile of primary residents, second home residents, investor residents, and making sure that we take a good look at this, because I, I don't want us to jump the gun on this particular ordinance, and then all of a sudden, we set up an ordinance that basically kills Bridge Harbor's potential future development. And so I want to make sure that everybody has had a chance to carefully look at that, so that if you don't, in fact, do that. And part of that process includes understanding the coolness there now and how it's being utilized. But also that the council also understands that there are plans in place for residential development, that there are plans in discussion, I should say, and there have been over the last year for the development of that space all along the back of that particular harbor, created additional harbor space, more importantly, the commercial development of that area. And I will also point out that, of course, that space of Bridge Harbor sits right across the intercultural highway, and right across over there is a very thriving marina and restaurant space of the Dorados, and of course, the city of Surfside. And, you know, when we say we don't want to become Galveston, no, we want to be the best Freeport. But we also want to make sure that we're making prudent choices for our future and our economic future. And we've had discussions about that in terms of the industrial tax that we are, we're potentially losing in the future, and I want to make sure that if we're trying to position ourselves here early on to maximize the future potential, increase sales tax, we need to know very prudently with this. I'm asking that we delay it until the next meeting.
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, we appreciate you spectating, but that's what you are, spectators. So now hold on a minute now, let's, let's show proper decorum and proper respect when we're up here. We'll do the same for y'all out there, let's keep the chattering back and forth to amend on Mr. Pena. Are you through, sir? Was that one floor or is that two?
That was, that was my point, that our request that we could move this to the next meeting and have the city manager provide that information so that the council can make an informed decision on this, as far as these two demographics of that space.
Very good. Any other?
May I add something if I could?
Once again, there is a motion to approve on the floor.
Yeah, I understand.
All right.
I understand. I just, to, to, to that, we heard from the local residents, we heard from local taxpayers, we've heard from people who shop in our grocery stores. We have not heard anything from the owners of these houses because they're not here. And furthermore, what is, I don't understand what Dorados thrive in paying Surfside taxes has to do with the city of Freeport.
Well, I can see a connection, but I'm going to call the question, since we have a motion to approve on the floor, therefore no further discussion is necessary, and I will call a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried, four to one. Correct. Considerate number nine is consideration of possible action approving Resolution number twenty-two-one, dash two-seven-one-two, amending the master fee schedule for short-term rentals. Gentlemen, it's been a new pact to be able to read a couple times. This is basically amending our fee so we can collect and keep tabs and proceed and take care of administratively.
So. Mayor, I reviewed it, and I make a motion that we approve Resolution number two-zero-two-one, dash two-seven-one-two, amending the master fee schedule for short-term rentals.
Very good. We have a motion to approve. Our Councilman Brennages is our second.
A second.
We have a second from Councilman Kane. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carried, four to one. Thank you. Item number ten, consideration of possible action, Resolution number twenty-two-one, dash two-seven-one-eight, accepting proposal for solid waste service and giving notice of award. Mr. Fancher, you have signed up to...
I kind of wanted to see how the council feels about the matter before I weigh in. That's possible.
Your heads and your bets, huh?
Yes, in my opinion.
All right, very good. Mr. Kelty?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an item for consideration for a new solid waste provider that's trash service for the citizens of Freeport. Currently, that service is being provided by Waste Connections, and we have been under contract with them. I believe that we're in our second contract with them. Currently, they only provide service for residential, residential pickup. We did go out for bids earlier this summer for proposals to pick up solid waste, both from residential and commercial customers, not including industrial customers. And we only received one proposal at that time. There were some changes that were proposed in that, in that proposal, and that was that we would reduce the bulk waste pickup that is currently, every week for every resident can set out out up to two cubic yards of solid waste. We were proposing, asking for a proposal that reflected a once a week, excuse me, once a month pickup for up to five cubic yards, and that would actually occur on a rotating basis. So each cit, each quadrant in the city would have a different week for pickup, and that would allow, I think, for better response and less trash accumulating on curbside. The proposal, excuse me, we only got one proposal, so staff went out and looked for others. We actually had sent to four different providers at that time, and only one had submitted. So I became aware of a company called Amerowaste. They, I believe, are providing services both League City and Alvin, and I got good references from both of the, from a service standpoint. They, they're extremely responsive to concerns, and so when I, when I went to them and asked for a proposal, they gave me one, and I'm happy to say, actually, for the residential collection, the fee that they would charge actually allow us to reduce the fee that we charge customers by about twenty percent, and that's not something that we can, that we've done very often, is actually reduce our, our utility fees. And if there is, there were some differences. They were talking about a sixty-five dol, excuse me, a sixty-five gallon cart, and there is additional charge if people wanted a second cart. And then the, they also gave a proposal for the, the commercial pickup. And that varies because of the fact that every commercial customer has a different demand, whether they get picked up daily or once a week, whether they use a small roll-off or a large roll-off. But this would also include the dump, excuse me, small dumpster or large dumpster, and all the roll-offs, so we have construction contracts. But I believe that Janelle is here from Waste Connection, from Amerowaste?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. So if you have any questions for her, their proposal is in the, in the packet. But if council has approved the resolution tonight, then Mr. Duncan and I will work on the details of the contract that we bring back to council at a later date. I will say that the, the commercial portion of the contract will not actually be effective until April first, but the residential could be effective February first upon the expiration of the Waste Connection contract that the council has approved.
Ladies and gentlemen, Larry, you might want to say something now?
Larry Fancher, I live at sixteen thirty West Constrictor Freeport. I apologize, did not provide, I did not prepare for this, because I didn't realize we were looking at potentially changing the contract or recommending the contract be changed. So I think I'm hearing that we will only go to, we'll only have once a month heavy trash service pickup in this new contract, is what I think I'm hearing. And I'm not sure how that beautifies the city or makes or improves the situation, makes it any better than it is now. Drive down my street and you will find trash all over down my street that's been there for a month, and this is what I can look forward to, and residents of Freeport can expect, that our trash service will continue to, we're getting a better rate with less service, is what I think I'm hearing also. But I'm very confused that the city would entertain any contract that would not improve the service that we are currently getting right now. The last year, two years, I've sent letters to the council with pictures, documentation, showing what our streets look like when the city garbage is not picked up on a regular basis. It's sat out there for weeks, and service is not improved, and I'm just hearing that we're getting the same old. And correct me if I'm wrong, but that's, that's what I'm hearing.
But Larry, you're not proposing staying with the same company?
No, sir.
Okay, okay.
No, sir. No, 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 and, and I applaud the city and the management and staff for looking into the situation and trying to improve it by finding another company if possible, and I know they probably worked very diligently in trying to...
Yeah, I think there's some additional information that she can give you on that, what your concern is.
Okay, thanks very much.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I was in the meeting with them, so...
And if you would, try to inform what you've done, please, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens of Freeport. I think we'll kind of clarify a little bit of what our services are. On the twice-a-week household trash, you have up to six items that you can put out. I think currently you get one can. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So six items, which would include bagged green waste, bundled green waste, regular household trash. You must have the cart that we will be providing as part of it to identify yourself as a paying resident in the city, or will be coordinating with, happy to know when residents aren't paying. The once-a-month heavy bulky waste is for like appliances and furniture. It's not for your normal household trash, green waste, that type of waste that is generated from individual homes. On your normal pickup day, if you're going to put out a small desk or an office chair or some of those type of items, they will be picked up on your Monday, Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday. The once-a-month Wednesday is for your bigger items, mattresses, sofas, refrigerators, appliances.
That's exactly what we have in front of our house on a weekly basis, is exactly appliances, the mattresses, the tree limbs. Our streets look like dumps.
That's, that's, that's well a good, Larry. Now, I don't dispute that, because I drove down this street a number of times with all those limbs and everything else out there, and we stayed on Waste Connection, we called them daily, and you saw how well that did. So that was not an option. And here we have an option that you actually can, could put more out there on a day, on a twice-a-week basis, six items, including the, well, inclusive of the carts, so five, plus the carts and so forth. And then you're going to have bulk trash pickup. One of the things that we're looking at, and I had a number of calls from many, many people, is customer service. And we have checked the background of this young lady and her company, and their customer service is part or none, I mean, any of the companies out there. Mind you, another company came out and gave us a bid. Therefore, we are, we had two council members that, Mr. Kelty, or the...
One.
Two, maybe one, with Mr. Kelty, that went through this contract and so forth. And Larry, like I said, I appreciate you, and I understand what you went through down on Tenth Street, because this was terrible.
Today, still, it's still a problem.
Well, guess what?
There's junk piles on both corners of my street, right next to the councilman's house.
Here's the deal. If this contract goes through, these folks are going to do their job, and then the city's going to have to do theirs. So if there are folks that are putting out outside of the timeframe, okay, one of the things that I think is imperative for the city to get out and to be strong on is giving proper notices on when to pick up. Okay, I don't know if we do, well, we don't do a good enough job now, so people just put stuff out and hopefully they pick it up in that week and so forth, so that there will be notices. But we also have codes that we can certainly enforce, and so...
Mayor, I got a...
Hope that answers your questions. Ms. Brenn?
I got a couple of things real quick. First of all, I mentioned her for the first time at our meeting this week, and she was a no-nonsense lady. I assure you of that after spending a little bit of time with her, and I assure you from our meeting that she will be sure that Free, the city of Freeport receives superior customer service. Some of the things that she touched on, if you've ever called Waste Connections, which I'm sure a majority of you have, you talk to a machine. If you call her office, you talk to a person, and that person addresses your issue. And that's huge to me today, because you don't see that very often. The other thing is, is that they just bought brand-new trucks, so we would have brand-new truck service in our city, and not only brand-new trucks, but not automated trucks. There are actually men on the back of the trucks that pick up the can and bring it to the, to the truck, which is important, because now, if it's anything outside the can, it stays on the street. She assured us, you guys are welcome to call if it doesn't happen, that everything would be picked up, not everything, but with, in the contract, outside of that can and put in the truck on that day. That's a big difference from what we, from what we have been receiving. The other thing is, is there any way that we can pass an ordinance that only this stuff can go out on the days that the trash is picked up? I mean, can, can we stop this from...
We, we, we have, counsel, we already have the enforcement process in place, but so, but I'll tell you, we've done a lot more vigorously.
Right, okay. I just, I'm telling you from the meeting, you know, I was, I hadn't heard of them, did some research after the fact, and it's a jam-up deal. The, the roll-off boxes is another deal that's, that's huge in the commercial end of it. They guarantee when you, when you call for a roll-off box as a contractor or anything else, you're going to get a roll-off box. If you try to call Bears or anybody today, Waste Connections are going to tell you it's going to be forever. The other thing that Janelle came up with, if you call today for a replacement, my, my can broke the other day, and, and so did, well, anyway, it didn't matter, my can broke the other day, and they told me four weeks, when I called, I'd get a can in four weeks. Her idea is they're going to leave it inventoried at the city hall. The city hall is going to bring you a new can when you call and say it's broke, and they're going to switch those out in their system, and everything's kept on a spreadsheet by can number. And I'm telling you, this company has it down, and it's going to be a true difference for the city of Freeport.
You know, Councilman Brennages was very passionate on that, and I appreciate his effort on that, but he just raised your old bar before it even come out.
I already got one on my desk, so...
Here's on Front Street.
Yeah, just listening, I'll be the first one to come up here and applaud their service if it's as good as we're being promised, but I'll also be up here to let you know if it doesn't.
No, understand, Ms. Fancher, we appreciate you, I always have, and I will tell you, I don't know this lady, madam, but I know somebody that does, and every time, like just, Councilman Brenn says, you phone the company, you get hurt. So you don't get, you know, somebody in the community, you get hurt. I don't know who that's, so...
So if you get sick, then don't go on vacation?
There you go.
I think, I think the lady right back there, sitting beside her, will answer it if she does, according, according to our meeting.
Tim, where was I when you called me the first time, do you remember?
Out, out, making a drop-off.
I was on vacation, in Puerto Ranso, and you called... Uh, I was on vacation. You ordered randoms and you called and I answered, um.
That's right. Uh, one, one, we have one question from, uh, Mr. Hayes who was already, uh.
The, the size of containers that we have now compared to what you were talking about, what, what's the difference?
It's, uh, about, um.
Currently, you have ninety-five gallons.
Nine pounds easier to push around for the elderly in the community. Uh, but remember, as long as you have that can out, you can put five additional items to become bag things, you can buy your home cans. As long as they're on ninety-six.
That's fine. I just wanted to compare what the two.
Thank you. Good questions. Good interaction at the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I've got one, one comment real quick. The issue that we have been having with Waste Connection is bulk trash. Before I sign off on this, on a, of once a month bulk trash, I need, I need to know for sure that it's going to get taken out. If not, we need to go to at least, uh, twice a month. I don't know if, if they're willing to do that or if there's negotiation there.
Well, one of the, one of the differences is that you have the official once a month bulk, uh, bulk trash pickup. But because of the fact that as they're picking up trash, because currently Waste Connection comes around with their truck and uses the automated arm to pick up trash cans. And then may or may not, probably may not actually get the, get the bags that may be sitting out there or the, the loose stuff that might be laying by the end of the curb or the, the brush or debris. So what she's saying is that on a weekly basis, they'll pick up the can and anything that's laying next to it. As long as it's, you, five, uh, five items, right? So they'll pick that up on a weekly basis. But then on a, on a monthly basis, you can put up, up to five cubic yards, which is like. The five washing, uh, excuse me, which is like a washing machine and dryer and a, a music chair.
So what I've been, what I'm hearing is if Mr. Fancher had his limbs wrapped up.
Mm-hmm.
And should only have a trash can sitting next to it, then they would probably dig it up as well. And they would pick up the Halloween costume that's sitting up in front of my house. Two weeks it's been sitting.
Save it for next year.
Okay, recycle Halloween.
All right, very good. Any further questions, Council?
Mayor, make a motion that we approve, uh, let me find it again. Resolution number, resolution number two zero two one dash two seven one eight, accepting the proposal for solid waste service and giving notice of the order.
Very good. We have a, uh, motion to approve the resolution twenty seven one dash two seven one eight. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second from Councilman Kane. Thank you, sir. Is there any further questions?
Uh, the one question is actually, um, interesting question that Mr. Hayes had in terms of the, the volume of, uh, those cans. The current cancers are at what cubic feet per.
Current, the current sized cans we have are ninety-five gallons.
Ninety-five gallons.
Um, the cans that we'll be providing are sixty-five gallons.
So you're looking at about one-third.
Yeah, what I, 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 we're getting a twenty percent discount for one-third less.
Right?
We have the additional items and, uh, and most, I mean, I, I, I don't know how, I know I always fill my can up. Because I've got seven people living in my household. I don't know how common that is, that people fill their entire can up on a weekly basis, on, and then twice a week.
I'm just trying to make sure we do a truth comparison.
Certainly. All right, well, excuse me. Ladies and gentlemen, let's, let's keep it down. Janelle, will we have you come back up, please, ma'am? Oh, thank you for the forum. Um, do you have a comment for Councilman Kane in regards to what he is, uh? My, just, you know, the way I, what you're saying, Jeff, if I hear is that there's a reduction certainly in, uh, the garbage tote. However, there is the opportunity to put five additional items next to that tote. Is that a savings to the city of Freeport or not?
Yes, it is because you're currently only getting ninety-six gallons worth of potential trash.
So what's the.
And with our proposal, you're getting your sixty-five and you could have four fifty-five gallon bags of green waste. Or you could have, you know, two fifty-five gallon bags of green waste and three more of household trash. You could have a big party for the weekend where your current service limits you to a one ninety-six gallon cart per pickup. We use the sixty-five because we do not have automated trucks that we're going to bring into the city. For workers' comp purposes, you've got guys that are picking up these cans and dumping them in the truck. And to help alleviate any injuries, we go with a smaller can.
And also from the contractual part, you're saying that, that sixty-five gallon tote is kind of the signal that you have an account.
Correct.
Right? So you pick up more than just what's in the sixty-five gallon tote, but you need that out there so you know you have an account with the city.
An active account with the city.
So there could be, it's, it'll probably be more, as much or more trash than is going to be picked up now, but.
Yes.
That's the, the signal for your, for your contractors.
And it's going to be, it's going to be incumbent upon us, the administration, to really make sure that we educate as many folks as we can. But I do think, uh, as you're saying, there's actually more ways to.
The follow-up question I have is on the bulk side because that seems to be, uh, the issue here in the city is that there's bulk trash that's left. Um, for longer periods than, um, I guess our contract is supposed to allow for. Speaking to Mr. Fancher's making that, that point here tonight, but I know in previous council meetings that, that has been a big issue in terms of the large waste pickup. So the question in terms of the large waste pickup is again, volume. Um, so we're going to be, right now, our contract has us at how much in terms of cubic yards, uh, for the month in the city of Freeport with waste management? And then what would we be going to, um, with this particular contract?
Mr. Kel.
Are you asking in regards to bulk waste? So in addition to the waste that they would set out next to their garbage can, um, right now, we are allowed to set out up to two cubic yards of bulk waste every week. Um, under the new contract, you'd be able to set out five cubic yards per month. So there is a reduction. If you are an individual that actually set out bulk waste, you have two cubic yards every single week. You'd actually have less bulk waste that you could set out if that were the case. Without any other, I'm sorry?
So you could go to two tons every week, which is what you said?
No, two cubic yards.
Two cubic yards, excuse me.
So currently, there is a potential to set out two cubic yards. Now, I don't know how many residents actually set out two cubic yards every single week. I know we have residents that set stuff out every week, but I don't know of the specific residents that set stuff out on a weekly basis in addition to their tote.
But our current agreement is the, uh, the pickup once a week.
I'm sorry?
Right now, the bulk pickup schedule is once a week.
It, it's certainly scheduled once a week, but it's certainly not.
But that's not happening.
That's correct.
So we're going to end up moving to one big bulk pickup. Is there, is that going to be scheduled in the first week? Or is it going to be like, more day gets first week, more day gets second?
So the city would be divided into quadrants and most likely it will inevitably follow a compact board, I think that's probably the easier way to do it. And one, one, one quadrant would be the first week of the month, one quadrant would be the second, third, and fourth.
I think if we kind of keep that running reasonably, even alphabetically, A, B, C, and D, one, two, three, and four, that might help. But let me ask, um, and I'm sorry, I forgot your name now.
Janelle.
Janelle, Janelle. In the contracts that you have with other cities, what is it that makes those agreements work? Is there a part of the city that needs to operate effectively as well? The reason I ask this is because I want to make sure that, I mean, I like what the numbers are saying already. But I also want to make sure that we hold our city accountable too, to make sure that we're doing our part. Because it makes no sense to have any contract with any waste management company if the city's not doing their part. Because otherwise, we'll have trash in the streets.
Code enforcement is our friend.
Ms. Brin.
I think Kathy is too.
I don't know. You've been checking up on me. She's been calling my references with other trash companies that I've worked with in the past. So I gotta watch out for her. Um, one of the other things that we're doing is we're doing a different managerial approach with this contract. And any contract that would have moved forward is that we're going to kind of streamline the process. Where I'm their, I am their point of contact with the city of Freeport. And things will run through me and or someone underneath you that I assign and I, and Casey is my deepest friend as well. So that there is one person and one department trying, instead of going all over the place. And that's one thing that I have found that works with the management of solid waste contracts. Is the relationship that we create with them. And that's something that I think that we can do. And that I'm, I, like I said, she's checked my references with other contractors, that we work. And if it's not working, we sit down and we communicate. Because I think, I want to be honest, that's one thing where the city has also failed in previous, is some of the communication. And that's one thing that Mr. Kelty and I plan to fix with this process moving forward. So that's how we're going to do it and we, we have a plan of action to move forward.
It'd be a little bit easier to track that from a bulk waste stand, standpoint because of the fact that we know there is one quadrant of the city that has bulk waste. It's supposed to be set out in one quadrant that has to be picked up.
Can you jump?
Um, and so if that is, if that quadrant is, is not needed picked up, it's going to be a little bit, it's going to be a lot easier to identify a failure in that, in that respect.
So, and, and thank you very much for answering the question, the question that I had here next to Mr. Kelty.
The one thing that was not also addressed and that we talked about in our meeting is we're also doing two semi-annual community cleanups. Where we're staging and folks can bring stuff to us. We're providing large roll-off containers. The citizens can bring any extra things that they have, that they haven't had an opportunity, opportunity to put out. Or it's something that is just like a special cleanup. So that's going to happen twice a year also.
Great.
Good?
Very good. Thank you, ma'am.
Now, the follow-up question I have for Mr. Kelty is, what communication facilities we have right now on the part of the city? That waste management is, uh, somewhat, you know, maybe not at fault. And I'm just curious because if we're saying there's a problem in communication, we're going to fix that with the new company. And this curious, what that communication process is currently, who is that playing out there? Because of where I'm going with this is. Uh, I'm, I'm glad that people are thinking about communication a little bit. But I, 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 I love Mrs. Janelle's, uh, energy and, and certainly I know she has a very strong background in the organization. But I also know she wears some very serious hats here. She wears the HR hat and she wears the financial director hat. And I'm just wondering if we put another hat on her, you know?
I have no doubt that she can use up to that hat. And, and really, you know, honestly, don't, I mean, this is actually something she's done before, um, in, in regard to the process currently.
Yeah.
Where's the communication. Um, and could the community go out and identify it?
This question is, who calls waste management when there's a problem right now?
It's Waste Connection.
Right now, it was, it was the previous billing official was in charge of it and then the utility billing manager. And there's been some lack of communication. And we're trying to fix those. And now the utility billing manager, we've already started that process now. And that anytime a customer calls and complains, it comes to me now and then I try to contact. So we've already started that process of changing some of the things that we're doing with the current contract.
We've got, we've got a lot that isn't making.
Yeah. I, I just know that at the end of the day, we want to make sure we have measures to measure. Because if it doesn't go measured, it doesn't go managed. And, uh, we need to make sure we hold, um, our staff accountable. Doesn't matter if we're going to hold this contractor accountable.
Well, I, I don't disagree because we're really going to have to get the notice out on the pickup levels and times and so forth. So with that, I'll certainly call the question.
I have one more question before you do, if you don't mind.
All right. I can't ever deny you, Jared.
Yeah. Um, here it says for an additional can, it's seven dollars and ten cents. Those of us that do have two cans, is that an increase or a decrease? If so, how much?
It's a decrease. It's a decrease because right now it's eleven dollars a can.
If you have a second can currently is eleven something?
Eleven dollars a can. Eleven something.
But if you leave your Halloween costumes out over the year, it goes up to fifteen dollars. Now, I'll call the question. We have a motion, uh, to approve on the floor. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried, ma'am. Thank you very much. Number ten. I have number eleven. Uh, it's always a good thing to get money. Consider, consideration possible action approved as granted for the GLO. Five point nine three million dollar two thousand sixteen flood, HUD mitigation for, uh, uh, influ, INI infiltration and infill, uh. Uh, inflow, excuse me, inflow and infiltration. Uh, Ms. Ezeo.
This is the first of the two grants that had been afforded to the city of Freeport. This one is for the INI, the Sanitary Reserve Collection System Rehab Project. That project is five one, five million nine hundred thirty-one thousand six hundred and twenty-six dollars. Those are the grant funds. The city will have to match those funds fifty-nine thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty-six cents. This is the actual agreement between the city of Freeport and the GLO to get those funds and begin the process.
Council, if, uh, if y'all approve tonight, which I don't see why you wouldn't, I have the opportunity to sign it, the documents signed right now so that we will get the funds in. And once again, uh, what's for able to reduce, uh, the flow of INI into the system, it'll, it'll, it'll make our wastewater treatment process that much easier.
So, Mayor, I'll make a little.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion from Councilman Kane to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, Councilman, all right. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried, ma'am, sir. Um, all right, thank you, ma'am. I have number twelve, discussion guided from the levee walk trail, Mr. Perry.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening, sir.
Uh, just wanted to bring this to y'all. I've got the bid documents ready to go. But I want to make sure how y'all want to bid out, if you want to bid out asphalt, granite, cane concrete. Uh, I've got some quotes, some literary quotes, and the concrete's probably not going to fit within our budgeted amount. Uh, I have got some contractors who gave me some quotes back on the rubberized material for, uh, like it's on tracks. And those will definitely not fall within our budget. Uh, that requires, uh, concrete to base subgrade that's compacted in with ribbon curves. And then that rubberized material's put in because that's so much movement if you don't put that kind of stabilization in that it won't, it won't stay. Uh, the only other thing I will add to the bid document is ribbon curves. If we, if we go, if it comes back, then we go with asphalt. And that'll help keep that asphalt also in place instead of it losing all the time. Uh, but I just wanted, I know Mr. Marai had had a certain kind of survey going and there was a lot of different opinions throughout the city. So I wanted to make sure to address and get the bid document correct before I send it out.
All right, Council. Uh, questions for Mr. Perry?
Uh, the, uh, I, I know it seemed, uh, on the survey, it seemed, uh, how would I say? It seemed like there was a lot of responses. There, there was. There was thirty-five responses. But, uh, they were split, uh, kind of almost evenly between asphalt, concrete, and, um, crushed granite or, you know, just gravel. And, uh, yeah, it was about like a, a vote difference, nine, ten, and eleven. So, and it's not, I, I don't think it's representative of the whole town, the city. But, uh, just my take and how I see it, uh, you said that concrete was way off, right?
Concrete will be outside of the budget, but it's, it's not a big deal to have three options in that, in that, uh, bid packet. I just want to make sure I bid it to satisfy.
Yes, sir. A lot of, uh, folks commented that, uh, you know, concrete is, is pretty hard on the joints and the muscles. And I run the levee every day and, uh, you know, the crushed granite would, uh, I'd, I'd, I'd lean towards the crushed granite. Just because that attribute with the health, uh, the joints and just seeing the different types of individuals that use it. But asphalt, I, I would say it'd be the least light. The, the concrete, uh, would be up there with granite. But that's, you know, that's just my opinion.
I agree on the granite, I think. And you're going to put the barriers to keep it in with that? We can add that into the big bid packet, yeah. I would definitely agree with the crushed granite.
What I, what I would like, I don't know, later on, we consider like a maintenance, some, something along, you know, ha, having, having maintenance. The, uh, the, the crushed granite, that would, you know, make, make things better. I, 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 I would hope. I don't know how that would work, but, uh.
Lan, I'm sorry.
All right.
Lance, does that, will you go around and replace, move, remove the concrete that's currently there and make the entire thing crushed granite so it does look like it's passed? Yes, yes. The rock is broken up out of the sidewalk now, it'd be. Perfect.
And if y'all finally come up with the, the length of this levee trail?
One point eight miles.
And where's it going to start and where's it going to end?
Starts at River Place and ends at Velasco.
Do you have a map of that route of the, the trail that's going to be put in?
Yes, sir. I do. I'm assuming. I'm assuming.
We, we give a copy, I'd like to see that.
Yes, sir.
Just to make sure that we're looking at, um, what exactly we're proving number one, but also I'd like to see those costs based on that. And then your footage, because I'm seeing one point one miles here in one quote and then one point eight miles, um, the, uh, bid options. So looking to use what we have to here and, uh...
The, the one point one miles was the initial before our meeting where we discussed continuing on, uh, on the levee trail all the way to Velasco. So that point seven miles is the extension all the way to Velasco.
Yeah. Well, I'll also mention that, um, you know, in terms of the materials that we're looking at, I, I don't know how we're going to decide upon that. If it's just gonna be strictly between five individuals here, um, going forward or if we're going to rely on any social media, you know, you know, really unscientific and informal, um, polling of thirty-five residents or if we're gonna tru- truly try to do a study, uh, that's always recommended before we spend this kind of money, like we're talking about for the state bucks. So I'm not sure how we go about that, Mr. Mayor.
No, we don't have to do anything tonight except discuss and give him guidance as to actually what we want him to look at. And I think what he's coming forth is three proposals for one point eight miles of different, three different type of materials. And then we would come back and bring it to us and we'd make a determination based upon the facts that he produces and, and only constraining by...
Sorry, Mayor, we can't hear y'all. I'm sorry.
You almost said something funny, but, uh, uh, so basically what I'm saying is, is that, uh, all we have for tonight on the levee trail is discussion guidance and Mr. Perry was bringing forth the information about the three different type of materials that we're looking at. And Mr. Councilman Marais, uh, referenced a poll that he was doing. Uh, and then somebody had a question about where the, where did the point seven from the one point one to the one point eight come from? And that was my particular question before that about where are we going and how far is this, where's it starting and where's it stopping? Uh, because I think it's gonna come up in one of our other discussions here about moving property from the Texas Park and one of that park for enhancement program, which we'll talk about. But this side of the floor is just discussion of guidance. I think Mr. Perry has discussed it. I think he has some guidance. Uh, and I would say go forward and send them more and you come back and bring it to us for our review. Certainly, counsel, if there's anything else that y'all want to discuss?
And just one thing real quick, I know that's the one point, I'll be quick. I know that's the one point eight mile.
You're interrupting me.
Oh, I'm sorry?
Yeah?
Go ahead.
No, nothing.
I knew you were through.
I didn't interrupt you.
Go ahead.
I'm gonna go home. No, go ahead.
I know the one point eight mile, uh, pertains to the, the crushed granite. As we move forward with this thing, there's a couple of things that I would like to see is that it continues a complete circle all the way around, over Velasco Bridge, down Front Street, down Missionary Harbor, to the park and makes it a complete circle. There's a couple of things in there we've talked about for four, five, eight, ten, twelve, twenty, thirty, sixty-eight years ago, that we need to remove that, uh, handrail or piece of that handrail so the trail can go through the, the bridge or, you know, to the bridge and over the bridge and back down, down Front Street. But as we talk about this, make it seem the entire three mile, uh, circle, uh, as, that's what a lot of people use. Another school uses it and, uh, so if we could refer to this as a complete circle in the future, that'd be great.
Yes, sir.
All right?
Yeah, definitely, I wanna see the graphic of what this is being proposed and then we can discuss how that really works.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Very good. Counsel, any other questions? Mr. Perry? Thanks, sir. Appreciate ya. Item number thirteen, consideration possible action to remove board members from Freeport Economic Development Corporation Board. Uh, at this particular time, I have, uh, Mr. Nicole Morales would like to make a comment.
No way.
All you backbenchers.
I'd like to see if we might be able to table this into executive session and then we can back out.
Uh, no.
No, we need that done.
Aye, aye. I said it last time. No, I'm not gonna say what I said last time, but, uh, Nicole wants to, uh, wait. We will not table going to executive, we'll keep it certainly out here, uh, in open session where we've always done it. Um, so I'm going next to Ms. Lisa Gerard. But as Lisa comes up, I'll just tell everybody, as I've said, at every meeting that we have these things, that I don't believe they should come to council until they go through the committees first. Anyway, yes, ma'am?
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Lisa Gerard and I am a former member of the Freeport EDC. I did resign in February of this year. And, uh, I would ask that you do take action to remove Jeff Pena from the, uh, EDC Board. Um, I will say that perception is everything, as, you know, many of you have heard that term. And I, it looks to me that when property is purchased, uh, I would say when most people don't know about the property, um, in that you are on the EDC and you're also on the city council and you're in executive sessions and you're privy to insider information?
Ms. Gerard, I need to stop right there.
Okay.
With all due respect, uh, there was an investigation done by the city attorney that was followed up and checked by the Texas Municipal League and, and the information that we gleaned from that investigation did not support any of insider, uh, or backroom dealing or any of those things. So we have to be very careful when we make those statements, especially when, uh, there's been documentation, documentation to the economy. Okay?
Yes, thank you. Okay. Again, I'll, I'll just say perception is everything.
Perception does mean a lot, right?
Yes, yes. And I think the perception, there's a problem there.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Y'all have Trey Colme and I together.
Okay.
Ma'am. Uh, Mr. Matt Morris.
Good evening, Mayor, counsel.
Good evening, sir.
Um, Mayor, don't come to council, it means too much. Um, but when you read press clips, um, you see a negative like on your city that you live in, born and raised, um, it's time to come and be more involved.
It hurts, right?
It does.
Yeah.
It does. Um, I've been here before. I said to counsel, I can live where I want to, have a great enough job, but I choose to live here, uh, raise my family here, um, and seeing the, uh, I live at seventeen twenty-two North Edmira. Seeing the news of the removal of EDC board members, um, was kind of concerning. Um, I don't think it up far enough. Um, I believe Mr. Pena, um, should be removed along with Mr. Marquez. Um, there's been talk that in the majority with certain board members. Um, and I believe Mr. Pena's been part of that too. Um, there was a lawsuit, my father against his company against the EDC. Mr. Pena was a part of that, making the judgment to continue with the suit when there was a settlement brought forth, would save the EDC money, but it chose to go, cost the EDC more money because they lost. But Mr. Pena needs to resign, um, just even with the feelings of the boys, girls club, um, that there should be, um, enough reason for Mr. Pena resigning. Um, I, it's also a little, um, just concerning to hear the impartial, uh, of city attorneys doing, um, investigations, um, which the, Mr. Pena is, is indirect slash direct loss of those proceedings. I mean, he would, yes, he can be impartial, but human nature is sometimes not impartial. Um, and if you have a position like Mr. Pena has with city council and on a board that or boy or city attorney, um, I find it very difficult to be impartial. Um, but I come to y'all, um, to remove Mr. Pena and Mr. Marquez. The other members of the board, um, are fairly here. I say let's give them a shot. I want to volunteer, but I don't want to volunteer with petty politics. I've had my, um, um, application filled out many times. I've never brought it up because I don't wanna be a part of it. I don't wanna waste my time with petty politics. Thank you.
Just remember this, Mr. Matt Morris, I wanna leave you this part of the change of process, you gotta be part of the process. So I really wish you'd reconsider. Thank you, sir. Uh, Ms. Morales, you're the last one.
Okay. So you guys out there, in case y'all don't know, I was one of the ones that got kicked off.
Address, address us.
I'm just saying.
I understand.
Anyway, one of the things that concerns me is, um, you know, Mr. Pena, all those allegations he made against me and I have requested open record. I want the information and I want all those, I want him to prove what he accused me of. And I've yet to get it. I guess tomorrow's my tenth day, so I'm sure I'll get that information tomorrow. But nonetheless, the other thing is, all the things he accused me of is, you know, other, um, EDC members have called me, says, oh my God, Nicole, the things he accused you of, that's, it sounds exactly like him. You know, I don't know what it's gonna take for you people to understand, but called upon the EDC and I have talked to, called you many times, Mayor. You knew my frustrations and I was threatened to resign and you said, no, 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 don't do that, don't do that. And now look what he did. He smeared my name at work. It's embarrassing for people to come and tell me, but you know what? He thought I'm gonna get away with that. And I want the information, I want the proof that he had alleged me, uh, doing a wrongdoing. And look at me, I'm talking to you.
Ms. Nicole, dress, dress mayor, please.
Well, I'm upset because that was horrible what he did and y'all allowed him to do that. Shame on y'all.
Okay, very good, thank you. Now, we have the motion out there. Mr. Bennett?
Uh, will you accept another comment on the EDC without me signing a sheet of paper?
You've already had your one, uh, break being my neighbor, so, uh, we'll make Mr. Hayes fill the paperwork out for you. How's that?
I'll do it.
Fair enough? All right. Go ahead, Mr. Collins. In fact, Kathy, you wanna come up? You want us to bring him up? There you go.
Elliot, kind of fourteen fifteen West Second Street, Freeport. I'm, uh, just have one broad, uh, comment. What has the EDC done for Freeport lately? Just simple enough.
Yeah.
Uh, there's monies, there's things to do and, uh, haven't seen much action as far as I can see. I could have my head in the sand, but I don't think so. So I'd like to see some activity at the EDC.
Yes, sir.
And maybe some new members might get it done.
You remember I, uh, took your spot? You wanna take my spot back on?
No, sir.
Your time?
I'm past that.
Your time, thank you. Thank you, sir. Very good. Counsel, comments?
I have, I have a comment real quick.
Go ahead, Ms. Kane.
As the liaison to the EDC, the city council, uh, I'm, I'm going to stand firm on my decision of removing Nicole and Mr. Marquez. It's nothing personal, it's nothing political. But in my opinion, those two were the ones that were holding the EDC back from getting anything accomplished. With that being said, I'm not saying that it was only them that's holding it back. The rest of the members of the EDC, I feel like have the city's best interest at heart without underlying agendas. Um, there have, there were more than one of the members of the EDC that had come to me about removing those two. Okay? If this, this continues and someone else or others come to me and say this other person is, is holding us back or if I feel the same, then I will stand up and, and vote even for them to come off as well. Personally at the moment, I feel like we need to see what we can do with what we've got and add a couple of the members to build the, build vacancies and then move on.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Bremage, your motion, sir.
Councilman Kane, I respect you, uh, very much. Uh, I think you know that and, uh, I think we can add, I can add some light. This is not gonna be pretty. Mayor, I hope you don't, uh, interrupt me, call me down. I'm sure you will if you see it fit, but I'm asking to, uh, make this presentation, uh, is based on, it's going somewhere. Um, not an attorney, but I'm gonna tell you that this research that has been done, from talking to people, uh, it's, it's issues that, that the people want addressed. It's people, it's issues that the people need to be aware of. It's, it's issues that the council needs to be aware of in making this decision for the motion that I put on, uh, the intended tonight.
Before you continue then, is this, is this information that you have provided to Mr. Kelty, the, for our package for, for tonight's?
Absolutely not.
All right.
Absolutely not.
Go ahead.
As I said last meeting, the names Kenny Hayes, Mark Friedenberg, Lisa Gerard, Trey Sullivan, and as early as tonight, he's stung by, have all resigned from the EDC and now the planning commission because of Councilman Pena. Um, it's in just, it, it's because they disagreed with the councilman slash EDC president slash board member and so nothing was done and he had some of them removed and some of them quit. Uh, issues like Councilman Pena's own real estate, uh, development or own real estate company that he's in on with, however you wanna word it, managing EDC properties or selling EDC properties and they thinking that there was something wrong with that in an unethical way and him disagreeing. It, it's unethical for that to happen. Councilman Pena has applied for, for three ten thousand dollar grants, two in his LLC's name and all three in his LLC's name. Two of the properties are in his LLC, one of them are in his person named Jeff Pena. That's thirty thousand dollars from a board that he sits on. That's unethical. I don't care how you look at it. I don't care how you spin it, what you say, what name you use, it's unethical. You don't do it and it's not something we've done or allowed to be done in the city of Freeport. It goes further, uh, there were some Conex boxes, or Conex box that was purchased by the EDC that was presented to the board, uh, by the board president, Councilman Jeff Pena, board president Jeff Pena, attorney Chris Duncan. They originally wanted to purchase three boxes, Mayor, but they knew after, after preparing to present, to present the three boxes, which was thirty thousand dollars, that there's a threshold from the EDC that they have to get approval from the council.
Now, Mr. Bremage, it, and once again, I, first of all, I, I appreciate your level of motion you're holding.
I'm holding it down.
You're doing good. But is that based on your assumption or is that based on effect?
It's based on EDC members that were present at the meeting. Uh, that's Mr. Duncan, city, city attorney, EDC attorney advised them to buy, purchase one at a time to keep it under the threshold. That's not ethical and to me that's petty politics. It's not, that's not what the thirty thousand dollar, uh, threshold was put in place for. Uh, Mr. Pena is on record of sta- of stating that the, the members from the EDC were removed from misuse of funds, poor spending and petty politics. Where's the Conex box today? Uh, Mr. Duncan, did you personally purchase any Conex boxes?
Mr., Mr. Duncan?
Okay, I'll move on. I'll move on. I'd just like to know if you did have many and did they purchase the same as EDC purchased? Same person EDC purchased it from?
And once again, let me just say this too, that they're, you can have a, a, a public entity and you can have a private entity.
I understand that, Mayor.
Let me say this too, 'cause it, it, I want, you know, I appreciate your comments, but also what you know, the, the, some of the actions you've talked about have actually been contemplated in the charter and the ordinances, which basically says that if you do have some type of competing interest or if you're purchasing them, that you have to recuse yourself from the vote. So I don't, I never liked it, but it's in there.
Okay.
But I want you to be aware of that.
Okay. And, and where I'm going with this is, is why I'm... Okay. And, and where I'm going with this is, is why I'm, 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 I put on the agenda to remove the entire board because this is happening. This is taking place currently, a, as, as, as we speak. Uh, and then the boxes went on to a company to be remodeled, and, you know, same, same thing. I, I just, I, I want to know, uh, a, about the boxes because I think it's unethical, and I, I, I don't agree with the way that it, that it went down. You know, in, in, in the investigation of the EDC, the timeframe was February of twenty twenty to September of twenty twenty. That was investigated. The investigation began in June of twenty twenty one, and it ended November the first of twenty twenty one. The purpose of the investigation assigned to Mr. Duncan was for the city, was, and was done for the city council, the city, uh, Freeport council, uh, and for the EDC to determine whether any, any unethical violations by Councilman Pena was committed by purchasing the Boys and Girls Club. In Mr. Duncan's report, he said that a joint investigation was done with TML, a joint investigation. I'd like to know the details of what joint investigation means. Did they actually participate in the investigation, or did we report to TML our findings? Also stated that he and the TML found no unethical actions by Councilman Pena. And you're probably going to shoot me down on this, Mayor, but it's, it's going somewhere. I wanted to ask tonight, Mr. Duncan, what your relationship is with Councilman Pena, EDC President Pena, EDC Board Member Pena, outside the daily business of the city of Freeport.
I'm going to give Mr. Duncan an opportunity to respond.
Who's Mayor, like, the song person?
We're going to open up the mic. Because, uh. Wait a second, please. We're going to get through this, and then each of you are going to have an opportunity to respond. Okay?
Does anyone have their response?
Yeah, you're going to keep moving.
Thank you, sir.
Go ahead. And, and so I'm sure that if, that's something that, you know, uh, Mr. Duncan wants to respond to, that, that, that's his business.
And it's important for the people to know.
I know it's important for the people to know, but you also have to be careful because, you know, I am not tied to the mayor of the city of Freeport. And, and I may go have a Dr. Pepper with Tim Kelty.
And Mayor, with all due respect, you're not doing an investigation on Tim Kelty.
Well, you know, I, my job is to oversee what he's doing, and in fact, I have to do an investigation. I have to. I mean, I'm so, as, we have to be careful with the perception that we say.
Okay.
And I understand, but please continue.
Uh, and, and the other thing, in the investigation, Mr. Duncan reported that he reviewed over five hundred emails. I'd like to know whose emails these were. Uh, and obviously, we're not going to answer that tonight.
No, I think so's a genuine question.
Uh, you reported, uh, that you interviewed the director of the Boys and Girls Club and its members. I'd like to know, did you, did you interview the director of the EDC at the time that worked with President, uh, Pena on a daily basis during the time of the question?
No, I lost you on that. You said, did he interview the director of the EDC or the director of Boys and Girls Club?
He, he put in his report that he, that he interviewed the director of the, of the Boys and Girls Club and its members.
Okay.
I would like to know if he interviewed the director of the EDC at the time that this allegation took place, and.
Make the verification.
Yes. I'd also like to know if he interviewed Donald Sisk. And I'd also like to know one more time for the record, did he interview Mary No Music? The last one, well, I have two more, actually. Uh, did you interview the city manager that was present during the EDC meetings and executive sessions and involved in the daily, uh, activities of the EDC at the time of the allegations? Did you interview Mayor Bass? And I know the answer to this one, did you interview me? And the answer is no. The last question I have before I close is, Mr. Duncan, when your investigation was complete, did you show it, share it, or any way did Councilman Pena know the results for the rest of the Freeport City Council?
Now, let me address it this way, uh, Mr. Brimage.
I have one more thing after that.
Okay, but let me, let me just make sure to say this before you finish. Your motion is to remove the EDC board members.
Yes, sir.
Now, we're going off into a subject that is not necessarily on this, the board agenda unless it's, you potentially do it in the workshop.
You know what? You're, you're one hundred percent correct.
You're almost done. Why don't you get done?
Well, no, I, I, I'll, I'll save the rest because it really doesn't have to do, the, the things in my, prior to just now, had to do with activities that were taking place on the EDC with the current board members. And I would rather there be no EDC than there be operating how we're operating now. It's, it's, it's embarrassing. I dealt with it three years ago, and, and basically, the, the same, it, it started the same way, and we ignored it for years. And I'm, I'm at the end of my, my tenure, uh, with, 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 with Freeport city politics. And I, until I get far away from here, I don't want to see it again.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Pena.
Like, what was the intervention?
Oh, I'm not, I'm not through. I'm sorry, Mayor. I have one more thing.
Mayor, let me just, since I have the mic at this point, I'm going to leave that to the workshop. I'll take off the mask.
Please, sir.
Can I, can I, let me, I'm sorry. A, 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 no, it's EDC, but let me just say this real quick. Um, I do commend your temperament on this, uh, first of all, but ladies and gentlemen of the, of the, of the church, ladies and gentlemen of the, of the community out there, uh, these are very serious statements and, and, uh, comments that have been made, and, uh, I expect and I demand that the audience be attentive and not responsive in something of this effect. Because this has a something, this, this, this can affect, certainly will affect how we are perceived in the community, in the communities around us. But it also can affect people's and individuals' lives. And so, you know, I want to stress that I will, the chair, the mayor will not entertain any outbursts or statements from the, uh, audience unless it is done in a proper fashion. And, Mr. Cundiff, if you can hold that quiet, I'd like for Mr. Pena to respond.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I was only disappointed that this particular item was on the agenda because I didn't think we were going to be relitigating this in the public forum. And, uh, I want to first start off with the, the public comments that were made last meeting, and that were also presented here this evening. So I ask for a bit of patience on that, and then I will get to, uh, Councilman Brimage's, um, commentary and my response to her re-accusation. Now, I will say this. Couple days in a night, pretty stressful, um, just because, you know, I volunteered to be a part of this community, and, uh, I feel pretty beat up. And I'll tell you, I can take a punch, but I'm not going to be beat up. I am, I am going to defend myself, and I can defend my record, uh, and I ask your patience to hear. Now, there's also this discussion of personal attacks. And I don't want to go down some road of purity test of like who is, who knows who, and who's friends with who, and who drinks what, and who sleeps with whose wives. I don't want to get into all that. So I'm asking you, Mr. Mayor, to help keep control of that. And I'm also asking that the city attorney, that if we're going to go down this road of personal attacks of character, I want to ask the city attorney to provide legal warning to all residents and all fellow, and all fellow, uh, council members to be wary of any comments that can be met with lawsuits of slander and defamation. I ask your assistance on that, and the city attorneys, mostly because I know you're an attorney. Now, let me go. Now, now, I will say my responses plural. And mind you, I didn't have a lot prepared because I didn't prepare for a lot of what was being said. But I will say the first thing here, um, I'll do the commandos here. Bear with me. Who was the first person that came up to speak? That was Mr. Gerard?
Uh, on, I number, uh, yes, sir, Mr. D.
Correct. You know, Lisa Gerard was on the EDC board, and, um, I got to know her. And we, we agreed on some items, and we disagreed on some of them. But, uh, one thing that she mentioned to me when she, uh, offered her letter of resignation from the EDC board was that, uh, she felt uncomfortable that the EDC board had asked, I should say, they voted in the majority to allow me to list the properties of the EDC at no commission, and even at very limited marketing because she was worried of unethical violation concern. And the, the thing about that particular conversation, I never had a chance to get to do that after that, is I took it to heart, and so since her resignation, I have never listed any of these properties. The only person that has listed those has been the former executive director, Corin Hall. So, as, as it relates to this Gerard, uh, last week, when, uh, Mr. Brimage was trying to list all these previous board members and, and, and then trying to insinuate that, and, and for them, I'd just outright declare as truth that their only reason that they're not on the EDC board is because of me. Um, well, there were, there was a majority vote not to have me on the board. There was a majority vote to have me elected as president. So I don't bully anybody. It's an insult to the other board members that they're bullied by me. I just come to every meeting prepared as much as possible with ideas, questions, and any solutions that we can have, a meaningful discussion to move Freeport forward. Now, I will say this. There's no insider information. There was none. And I don't know who, who wrote the report, but I believe, Mr. Kelty, you handed out a, a printed copy of that, that report to every council person. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so I'm assuming then that every council member had a chance to review it. I can tell you that I have not reviewed it, simply because I already knew the truth. I knew the truth the moment I joined the EDC, because I specifically asked, and I remember Mr. Brimage was there. And, um, Yusuf was not there. Mark Friedenberg was there. Jason Travis was there. I don't remember if Mr. Duncan was there, but I specifically asked, if me being on this board creates any conflict of interest for me to invest in the city of Freeport, I cannot be on this board. I was then assured that I could be on the board so long as I recuse myself from any votes and decisions, uh, for any particular properties or any other particular business venture. That said, I will say, the reason why I know about properties for sale is because I am in the business of real estate. So you probably don't want to hire a real estate agent that doesn't know about properties that are on the market or off the market. And that's what I do. I do real estate. I'm a real estate investor. I also have a mortgage company where I actually help people buy their primary residences and their investment properties. And a part of that is, is that I actually have a network. There's a whole, um, industry of wholesaling, real estate wholesaling. And you guys have probably seen the signs around town from these wholesalers, and it says, we buy homes, we buy ugly houses. All of those guys, they get their information for properties that are off the market, either through tax rolls or, um, they send out mass mails, and a lot of them just get cold calls. And so me knowing about this is because, these properties is because it is my business. Nothing malicious about knowing my business. There's nothing malicious about doing my job well. There's nothing malicious about me trying to, uh, support my, um, my, you know, my livelihood. So if, uh, if any of the big people, uh, will say, if, if Ms. Lisa Gerard was to say that she got off the board because of me specifically, that's okay. She is allowed to have that opinion, and, uh, I respect that. But there were four or five other members that stayed on the board because I wasn't on the board. Then we get to, uh, and I have a list here of the values and the, uh, financial, I guess, contribution to the EDC. And I'll go down the line here, is that in the past, when I believe Mr. Brimage was actually president of the EDC, the EDC paid well over two million dollars, it was two to two and a half million dollars for this Marina property that they overpaid for, in my estimation. And my estimation is based on doing a market analysis on properties, which is, if you have any idea what real estate's about, that's, that's kind of the baseline. And I know that the argument was that we didn't want to have a barge company coming in, but that was before my time, but I will tell you this. It set the city back, it set the EDC back five to six years, uh, to conduct any meaningful business and development since it was purchased. And it wasn't until it was actually, that loan was paid off, that the EDC in twenty eighteen started planning to try to actually put in place the master plan developments along the river, plans of, uh, along the, uh, the beach and throughout the rest of Freeport. So when we talk about bad contracts, that's a bad contract. I wasn't here. I apologize. And I was not here when that contract was here, because if I was here, I would have policed it. But I will say something else. What I've been doing on the EDC has, and polices.
Wait a, wait a second.
And then we get into that.
Several orders.
And I have several examples, but I'm only going to go through a handful. Because it is important, because here's the deal. As Mr. Metamoros had said, he read this stuff in the paper. He read this bad news about the city of Freeport, and he read how this besmirches the, the city of Freeport. Well, it also besmirches my good name, and I'm going to make every effort to help clear that up. And then, for those who want to believe whatever they want to believe, that is one thing, but for the record, I am willing to say it right because I stand by it. And I will stand by this. There's been bad contracts that were in place when I arrived. One of those was a riverfrontage contract that gave away riverfrontages and public access along the South River, Levee and Brazos River Boulevard. The street actually named after the river. Each lot was sold for five thousand dollars. Six lots together combined, you're probably looking at somewhere about a hundred and a hundred fifty thousand each. So there was a loss of about six hundred to nine hundred thousand dollars of equity for the city of Freeport. I tried to put the brakes on it, but it went through, and that was before my time, and that got pushed through. More importantly, when we started looking at another development while I was a board member, was Real Two World, and there was no financial due diligence done by the then fourth president, Trey Sullivan. Now, I will say, now we are in world and like, in a likely half million dollar lawsuit because of that Real Two World contract that we could have avoided, and to be clear, check the minutes, check the votes. I repeatedly requested the financials, and when the developer said he was not getting any answers from the city where the EDC, Mr. Brimage called, excuse me, Mr. Sullivan called Mr. Brimage, he was the then mayor, and he quickly appeared in about, about, in about ten minutes in a backroom deal agreed to at the EDC offices, commentary room on the second floor of the city hall.
Hold on your mic, please.
Yeah, now let me, let me do the same thing with this. Is that something that you are aware of, or is that an assumption?
That was something that I was in presence of. Now, let me go on, because it gets a little juicier. And a backroom deal was agreed to. That Real Two World would get the great lights to build six houses, and upon completion, they would get the hundred and ninety-two lots off of Skinner Street. When I mentioned that we had yet received any assurances that they had the finances to even start the project, much less complete the project, I was signaled, literally signaled, to keep quiet. much less complete the project, I was signaled, literally signaled to keep quiet. That person that gave me that physical signal was Mr. Kelsey. So you should, you really started asking yourself, "What did you piss off that excuse my attention?" And then we look at the Waterstone deal. Now let me just tell you, that Realty World deal is going to put us back about half million dollars. The Waterstone deal, Mr. Mayor, again, I was at that point, um, still just a board member. But I was the squeaky wheel on this stuff. And at the time, when this sweetheart deal was later offered for counsel consideration, and the Waterstone deal, let's be clear, that's another hundred and ninety-two lot development on Skinner, the same property. So, um, because Realty World wasn't moving on to the other six lots, we decided, well, let's go ahead and do the hundred and ninety-two lots for another developer. When the right approach the board actually agreed to a year and a half earlier was to market the property properly and so that we could attract as many developers as possible and that we could then pick the best one and that we'd have the least amount of giveaway incentives. But that was not done. Instead, it was fast track. No financial due diligence was done. And I was the only one asking the questions. And the reason that I could ask the questions is because that is my background. So when this deal was later offered to City Council, and this was at River Place, I was, I was a board member that spoke up at council informing the council that no financial had been given and that the EDC board had yet to be informed of the agreement and also had not voted on its recommendation. Fortunately, Mayor Bass also requested the previous Executive Director to go back to the EDC board for review and recommendation. The details of the deal that was pitched was a loss to the city potentially of over six hundred dollars. And then I want to go into the next thing, but this is the timetable. Now mind you, I'm the bad guy here that asks questions. I'm the bad guy just bringing the, bringing forward what we should be considering for the city of Freeport. And I don't know if you guys remember, but this is getting, this is the, I think this is the anniversary month of the accusations that I was facing last year to be removed from the EDC board. So, um, this is November. That's the time to remove a penny from a board and put it on the table. But let me tell you what happened last year. Because some of you may remember, and I'm sure the facts got this fact right, but I was there. At the time, the EDC had the eight point eight acres that Marina property that we had paid two and a half million dollars for. And Councilman Green wanted to sell it to one of his developer friends for four hundred thousand dollars. I had to get the roof when I heard this. I asked, "Where is the appraisal? Where is the numbers? Why are we doing this?" And then it was later revealed accidentally by the EDC Director, who knew this at the time, that he was to be a future tenant and moved his business, Captain Kent, to the building that's on stilts on those eight acres by Marina, on Brazos Boulevard. And he never revealed that to the board and he never recused himself. I'll tell you, to give away a four, a two and a half million dollar property that we paid for, we paid two and a half million, it's worth more for four hundred thousand, I helped to save the city at least that two and a half million. So I tallied up the losses. And so the losses, when I wasn't around, came to about three and a half million dollars. And the savings came over to about eight and a half million dollars. So, I wasn't born in Freeport. I don't have a bunch of money. I haven't dumped a whole bunch of money and invested in Freeport, but I try to invest whatever I have. But I'm saving Freeport millions and I have saved Freeport millions. Bear with me. If this is painful for you to hear through, just imagine what I'm feeling. I can't remember what Mr. Metamoros had said. Was he related to Mr. Garcia?
I don't recall that.
Um, well, I do, I do feel the same, um, misery and dissatisfaction and shame that the city of Freeport is yet again being maligned. I'm a big advocate for Freeport. And that is why I asked at the last council meeting that, in fact, we should have a procedure before anything is given credence because all of a sudden, because if it isn't black and white on the Fax newspaper or online on Facebook, all of a sudden, it's gospel. And that it's not fair to anybody on this council or on any board or anybody in the audience or anybody at home and anybody who might read this on the Fax tomorrow. But that is that you need to have some credible evidence before you start giving any kind of credence to any investigation because now, simply because there was an investigation. My name is irreputed now. And I, and I'm just leaning on, for those that know me and for that, for those who actually work with me on these boards and in the community, no otherwise. But they're not here all the time. And you gotta, you have to also understand this, is that most of the people on these boards are actually really nice people, really sweet people, non-contemptious people. Very mature. They don't want to be argued with people. They don't want to cause any trouble. They don't want to upset their neighbors and I respect that. But we have real business at hand and we have tough decisions to make. And I keep telling anybody that tells me or asks me, I am not a politician. I am not a yes man. I will tell you the hard truths. And unfortunately, there's a lot of folks here that don't like to hear the hard truths and hear the hard questions. And it's just the same as tonight, when we talked about the speed bumps and when we talked about the ordinance for Bridge Harbor. I will pitch my ideas, but I am not always lending these ideas. I don't think anybody saw me bullying this council here. And I've operated no differently than the EDC. So I don't bully anybody. I present my ideas. And then I was hopeful that I can articulate them enough so that the majority of the board, not to be unanimous. But we don't make decisions based on unanimity. We make it based on majority votes. The majority has gone my way and I voted along with the majority as well. It hasn't just been me. I go along with the majority as well. But I've also been on the losing end. And I was on the losing end of that Realty World. Now you say it. And I was proven right. I will say that Mr. Hayes, Mr. Kenny Hayes was actually, um, mentioned as well as another member that, um, quit because of my membership. And I don't want to belabor the point, but I want to make one, one thing clear about it. Mr. Hayes never brought any original ideas to the EDC board meetings and you can look at the minutes. But he did vote against most everything that I offered him and you can look at the minutes. Now, he did vote along with me when, of course, it was the obvious majority. But to say that he quit the EDC because of me, well, you know, I'm not for everybody, I guess. But more importantly, if you're really not participating in a meaningful way where you're bringing new ideas and contributing to the discussion to advance Freeport's future, then you do not belong on the EDC. But other people did, other people did stay. And then shortly thereafter, I got elected President. And Mr. Garcia was there. I want to mention the grants. It was brought up, I can't remember who mentioned it, about the grants. But then I'm going to mention Mr. Brimich. Don't excuse my notes here.
Excuse me?
I'm trying to keep up. Oh. When people talk about, hey, what has the EDC done lately? Well, we've been doing a lot. We've been saving the city money from backroom deals. We've been, projects and plans in place to fulfill that map, that vision, which is part of Kindred Keys. Now listen here, if, if we want to hire Kindred Keys and pay them several hundreds of thousands of dollars to tell us what we already know, you know, people always get upset, oh, the studies. We spent too much money on studies, when some things are just common sense. I mean, I like the graphics. I like the architectural renderings. But common sense is the water. Common sense is that you want safety, speed bumps and parks. But that's okay. We will get there. We will get there together. What has the EDC board done lately? There's so much that is in the works, you guys. It's exciting for the beach, for the river. We're trying to do so much with the business integration. And I'm not the President, okay? But these are, these are like, some of the baselines that we've been trying to push. We have the grants that are actually for all the businesses and we're trying to streamline those. In fact, we pushed to increase the budget for, for the grants for the businesses in this community. And I will also tell you that in terms of my application for those grants, I specifically asked the Executive Director, the Attorney, Mr. Garcia even, if there was any reason why I couldn't apply for those grants. And I was told, no, there is no reason. You shouldn't be able to apply. And I specifically said, I want to go through the front door and I want no preferential treatment. What is the process? What's the application look like? And I will complete it. And I provided all the safe materials that everybody else did. And now they're changing the guidelines for that and that's fine. But if I am allowed to go through the front door and apply, I think that is, um, the best that I can do. And, um, you know, it's the principle of it all. I am investing in Freeport. And I said this back in, I think it was May, ever when Ms. Mism, when Ms. Music made these accusations. I had a chance to speak before her, before she did, excuse me. And I, I had to speak during Citizen Comments. And at that time, I said, "I will be investing in Freeport as much as I possibly can because I believe in Freeport." I would love to buy City Hall. I would love to buy that, I think it's something like eighty acres on the beach. But that's not in my, my bandwidth. But we can dream, right? I can dream. I can wish. The grants. The EDC is doing that. We awarded two grants here recently. You want to know? You just go over to Port Cafe and ask them if the grant monies that they got from the EDC is meaningful and helpful. Go over to Sweet Cheese. Tammy will tell you. It was meaningful and helpful for her business. And we're looking to do, we do a lot much more. And we're partnering with the museum. We're partnering with the Hispanic Chamber to bring out, um, business expos, job expos, you name it. We want to get this city moving. Yeah, I'd like for our economy to be as strong as it is and bitter against Galvestons. We're not going to be the same culturally. We'll have our own brand of coastal living, but we can get there. And there's a lot of plans in place. Now, uh, I touched on the grants. I want to talk about the, uh, the pop boxes, I think they're called, comics boxes, I forget the name. But I can tell you, it was brought up earlier and I'll let Mr. Duncan, who is the city attorney and who I consider a friend and that I respect. But I can also say that about Mr. Brimich. Well, excuse me, Mr. Brooks Bass. I am, I am taxed tonight, but I consider Brooks Bass also a friend. I consider Jerry Kane a friend, somebody I can work with. Mario, give a no. I haven't had a chance to forge a relationship with, uh, Councilman Brimich. And it's probably because we have a different vision for the city. That's the only thing I can think of. I, I want to remind everybody that when I was, a year ago, being asked, or the council was being told to consider a motion to remove me from the EDC board, the person that made that motion first was none other than Mr. Jerry Kane. And then the council, in a moment of fairness, by the direction of the mayor, tabled it to get some more information. And Mr. Kane had reached out to me and personally had asked to meet me. And I appreciated it because I didn't think he was afforded the knowledge that I wasn't able to describe and share with at the time of council. Just because I was under the gun and I was shaking physically. Maybe you guys might remember that. Um, I'm shaking a little less tonight because I just had to like grow a thicker skin because this is the, this is the price you pay for basically asking questions and trying to move the law forward. And for those that are involved in those boards, they get it. And I really wish that there were other board members here tonight. I don't know who is here tonight on the EDC board. They might be able to speak to that. But I can tell you, I'm not passionate about Freeport. I'm very deliberate about Freeport. I have a purpose behind it all. I see, I have a vision for Freeport. And I just want to help, push it forward. And it's really nothing all of my own. I'm really just far at the cliff. Those that were already here, that the masses already decided upon. And this is getting just really old that I have to defend myself for that. But that's okay. When you, when you start challenging the status quo in the establishment, this is what happens. But let me just say something here. The way that picture is rendered. Let me, Mayor, you may, I'm going to walk up to his stuff and take one more look at it real quickly.
Will you take the mic with you from the podium place or so?
I, I won't speak. It's a good plan. It's not a perfect plan. EDC fix. And, um, the only thing I can think about when I think about why Mr. Brimich just comes up at me or part of Bass is because I want to see the river developed that maximizes the utilization by every Freeport resident and every Freeport guest. So yeah, here's the, here's the big, uh, reveal. I'm for the river development. Everybody should have access to the river. That means we have a boardwalk that connects municipal park right outside here all the way down town. And then also we have one that also utilizes the levee so that we maximize the river frontage. And it's a very unpopular idea for those who live on the north side of the river who have invested their money, uh, well over half million dollar homes, which I can appreciate. But I envision that the, uh, the levee has this roundabout trail where you're on the river the whole time. Every other city that has a river or that doesn't have a river creates lakes, these false lakes. And they don't create these jogging trails or these recreational paths hidden away from the river frontages that they actually create. They put them right in front. And more people agree with that than, than not. And hopefully going forward, we'll, we have, we'll have a chance to have that, that discussion. But I want to make sure that this is not across examination. But I also want to make sure that, uh, we're, we're clear on that. We're not trying to, um, get rid of the EDC board. It makes no sense. It makes no sense to get rid of the EDC board. It makes no sense to get rid of the EDC. Unless you don't want to see what happens if the EDC tries to put in place the vision and the plan for Freeport, which is on the river development, on the river boardwalk access, uh, along the whole perimeter of the river. Not, not in, not meandering out into the neighborhoods, but on the river. That's going to maximize the quality of life and the commercial appeal of Freeport. And we do not, we do not have to be Galveston. We do not have to be Surfside. We don't have to be Big Jackson. We don't have to be Conroe. We will be Freeport in an amazing way. But I want to make sure that we're clear on what's happening tonight. There's personal tax and that's a slippery smoke. And the other part of the strategy is to, to kill and discredit the messenger or the messenger or the message or the report. But I'm asking, um, did you read the report? Has anybody read the report on council? So we talked about that pop box on the, on the levee on the south side of the river. You may have recalled it, that turquoise lane. Let me, let me talk about that. That'll be my last comment. It was removed because Councilman Brimich got angry. got angry, shouted, got in Mr. Keltie's face about it. Mr. Keltie chased me down in the parking lot after the meeting and said, we have to move it. I said, he's the only one councilman. We should bring this to council and vote on it. That didn't happen. Well, why are you asked, does he want it? Why doesn't he want that pop box out there? Why is he looking to vilify it? Why is he looking to see what the origins of it? Why trying to vilify it and saying, oh, it's just a bad deal? Even how they got it all done? Well, I'll tell you. Me personally, originally, I wasn't for the whole idea. I thought, and, and that's, this was the brainchild of a subcommittee that was comprised of Ms. Music, Mr. Gerard, and Mr. Duncan. And I really wasn't for it at the time. But I got to see the value once I started seeing it in other places. But that subcommittee actually came out and wanted to have six of them. And I was very cautious about it. I was very skeptical at the time. And so if you look at the minutes, you'll note that I was the one that said, instead of six, make it just one. And then let's prove it. But because there's been a revolving door of board members because of the political assigning of members, and I hope that this will be a lesson for council that we, we stick to the process of thirty days of advertising this legit, advertising it legitimately. And then also have interviews beforehand so that it's not a horse trading political gamesmanship on the day of council meeting. And I hope we do that. But I want you guys to think about who's making the accusations, what accusations are made, and why those accusations are made. I have nothing personal against anybody. I'm just trying to get these projects moving forward, be a part of it. I'm happy to do it, volunteer my time, and I have nothing more than that. Thank you.
You guys, Penya, Councilor, do you have anything you need to say?
No, sir.
All right. Any further statements or comments to council?
Yes, sir. Why was the city attorney being on the subcommittee? We paid him about an hour. Why would he be on the committee? Exactly, my point. He's there to advise you not to be on the committee. If he wants to be on the committee, he can hit like you and sign up and be on the committee.
I think that's what happened.
I don't think he's on the committee. I don't think he's on the board.
Hold on. I'm not going to have back and forth bearing.
Okay.
Let's have both of us. Now, hold on a second, Troy. Let's get through this process. You have additional comments?
Mayor, yes, I do. And I was very respectful and didn't say a word during the hour that you allowed him to speak. All I'm asking is allow me to speak now.
Of Mr. Bridge?
It's my agenda.
I allowed you all of your comments that you wanted to make, except those for the night were adjourned tonight. Now, I said you can make additional comments.
Okay, thank you.
But just don't make back and forth, okay?
All right, okay, thank you. I just asked a question. Uh, I did that plan up there as a matter of fact. I hit it, I spearheaded it and I think if you look at it, huh, walking trail goes all the way down downtown. All along the river, all along the levee. See that?
On the south side.
Right.
Mr. Penya, let him finish, please, sir.
Because the south side is the only side that goes from the park all the way to the, to the downtown. And that's why we did that. Backroom deals, he accused me of it. Just want to make sure that for the record, there was never any backroom deals. I don't need backroom deals. I got plenty of deals myself. Mr. Rourke hits an L ahead. Perception. Perception is the key. Perception of what the community sees from this council, from our city attorney. Perception is what we should consider tonight. Unethical is unethical.
Yeah, I want to be very careful before you play that. I don't know what's on it. All right? I've been aware of it by you beforehand, but I've chosen not to look at it. But I'm going to stress, ladies and gentlemen, that there is a process to do this, and it's called an election. That if you think somebody is not representing you, you vote them out of office. You don't bring this up over perception because perception starts wars, Troy. You know, and, and, and there are people that, I mean, I, 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 I just, I ask you not to play it. But that is your call. But I think, I think your point, you have made. And, but there you have it.
Give it back to me. Just know I got it.
Anything else, Captain Bridge?
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve item number...
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
All right, council, we have a motion to approve item number thirteen. Is this in regards to the entire Freeport Economic Board?
Yes, sir. Based upon, yes, sir.
Based upon, anyway, Mr. Bridge has made the point for consideration of possible action to remove all board members from the Freeport Economic Development Corporation Board. Is there a second?
I guess that's why he has a smirk on his face?
Misses?
No.
Bridge? Please, ma'am. We've got to follow the process, please. Is there a second?
Just one more, one more thing I want to say, just remember, there's an elections, there's elections coming up. And, and I won't make the video public until I show it to the mayor.
Are, are there any seconds for this particular motion to remove the entire board? I will call it one more time. Are there any seconds for this, support of this motion to remove all of the board from the Freeport Economic Development Corporation Board? Here is none. There's no action taken on item number thirteen, baby. I would always raise if there's, there's right and there's wrong. And the famous Senator, Congressman Monahan, that said, everybody's entitled to their own opinion, but they're not entitled to their own facts. And the facts are what you believe them to be. But ladies and gentlemen, and councilmen, if we want this city to continue doing the things that have been positive in regards to infrastructure, there's been positive in regards to changing waste connection or trash pickup, recognizing the streets and doing the things that we're doing for our kids, we have to work together. And I don't know if we're going to exist about it or not. I'll tell you, I consider Troy Bridge a dear friend. And I know he's got a great heart. And I consider Jeff Penya a good friend. And we had many conversations. And I think he has great ideas. But I don't know how to bring these two folks together. Because it has to happen some way or some form, some fashion. And I think points were made tonight. I gave a lot of folks a lot of access and time to speak because this is your city. We've got to get to one voice. We don't have to necessarily agree all the time, but we at least have to stand together. And I know, once again, that Mr. Bridge is a good man, and I believe the same with Mr. Penya. And I'm sure that we'll have further discussions. And I'm sure that we'll do things around election time. But folks, until we stop beating our gosh dang heads against these walls, we're never going to get outside of these damn walls. All we're going to do is they're going to sit back and say, well, there goes old Freeport. Is that what you want? Item number fourteen, discussion of possible action regarding transferring land from Texas Parks and Wildlife Park Land Protection Program. Mr. Keltie, before you get started, I understand we have some folks that do need to speak. Mr. Kenny Hayes, do I have you down to fourteen or was that thirteen?
No, it was fourteen.
It is fourteen, please. There you go.
It's such a nice evening here, Mr. Mayor. What is, I want to know why it would be up to the city council to decide if we took and transferred that land from the Parks Department and not make it parks and not let the citizens of Freeport decide if they want to do that. Now, I'm all in favor of the new center for the Chamber of Commerce, but I don't think that's necessarily where it should go. And I don't think that's what was in the plans with Texas Parks and Wildlife when it was given to the city. So I think that should be up to the citizens of Freeport to decide.
All right, sir. Thank you. Mr. Ruben Renoboto?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, my name is Ruben Renoboto. I live at fifteen oh seven West Second Street, Freeport. The information that I am providing is public information, subject to disclosure at any time as per the IRS on 501(c)(6) organizations. The entity that expressed an interest in developing, well, I'm sorry, the entity that felt an interest in development on the property in the Texas Park and Wildlife Open Recreation Program is a 501(c)(6) organization. According to their most recent tax return, which is the twenty nineteen tax year, filed with the IRS on May twelfth, twenty twenty, disclosed total revenues of sixty thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars and total expenditures of sixty four thousand thirty seven dollars. Of the total revenue, thirty eight percent went for salaries. Thirty two percent went for office expense. Eighteen percent went for event expense. Thirteen percent went for reimbursement expense. The return reflected a loss for twenty nineteen tax year. The tax return shows that the entity owns no land, owns no buildings. It also shows no other assets that they're owned of any kind. In the cash in bank in January two thousand nineteen was one thousand two hundred and fifty seven dollars. And the ending cash in bank in December twenty nineteen was two thousand nine hundred and forty nine dollars. My point is this. Consideration of any transaction within any entity must include a thorough vetting of the entity's qualifications, experience, and financial strength. Especially when considering a transaction on one of our most valuable assets. Additionally, among the IRS restrictions on 501(c)(6) is that the organization cannot engage in business itself. The organization exists to promote its members' business interests. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Reyna, Sam Reyna?
We're in the Freeports in nineteen forty three and I'm like this kind of lights. The Freeport Community House was located at thirteen hundred West Second Street in a area protected by development restrictions in the Texas Parks and Wildlife Open Recreation Program. The Freeport Community House provided a balance between three events centers in Freeport. River Place, which is located on Munson Street, is the largest and rents out for eight hundred a weekend and sixteen home, on weekdays and sixteen hundred a weekend. The Alasko Community House located at Montezkino Road is the smallest and rents out for one fifty on weekdays and two hundred and fifty on weekends. The Freeport Community House was a medium size and three, it was the most used, rented out for three hundred before troubles. It was rented out for ceseñeras, weddings, receptions, family reunions, cat reunion. But the building was entirely made of repairs and it would cost more money to remodel and bring to build than to build a new one. Mayor Bridge decided it would be better to tear it down and build a new one. So he was demon, and the expectation was to build a new one. I hope that continues to be the goal, to new one. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Garcia? Ed Garcia?
It's a call for his old man to get up there.
Mr. Mayor, I'm the city councilman. Mr. Keltie? My name is Ed Garcia. I live in nineteen twenty four North Avenue, Key. And I've been here longer than Sam Reyna. I really wish that this council and the mayor had given me the privilege of an investigation before they removed me from the EDC. I think you gave Mr. Penya an extended amount of time to clear that up. And unfortunately, I don't know if Mr. Kane or Mr. Keltie ever talked with the mayor or with the council to indicate their dissatisfaction with my performance in the EDC. I'm not here because of that. I'm here to talk about the removal of the restrictions on the park. And although, although, and I want to say I'm not, I'm not against any organization, whether it's the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce or any other nonprofit organization. As a matter of fact, when the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce organized, they asked me to help them in the organization. The recent being, my previous job had been to organize chambers of commerce through a five state area. So I gave Gina the articles of incorporation and divided those that were used by other chambers. I also was on the staff of the Texas Association of Mexican-American Chambers of Commerce when it was organized. And that also gave ideas and helpful solutions to the other chambers of commerce through a state, state of Texas. I was fortunate to have been elected president of the Dallas Mexican Chamber of Commerce, which was one of the largest and is the largest, one of the largest Hispanic chambers of commerce in the state. So I'm not anti. I was the first Hispanic elected to the Freeport City Council, and I represented our community well, I believe. I was elected four times. I was elected four times. But unfortunately, our junior councilman and Mr. Pena decided that they did not like my stance on this decision of removing the restrictions. I told him that I was against any organization that wanted to ask the city to give them the property, the most valuable property that we have in this city, to put a non-taxable entity on that facility, on that land. And I stand by that. I don't think we should give to anybody that's not going to bring more tax revenue to the city of Freeport. So, I'm asking this council to not remove those restrictions, continue the way it is, and I hope you realize that that is the best situation for the city of Freeport. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Arndt, ladies should have been first, but I just saw that you had additional item on fourteen, so would you please come up and take the mic?
Lisa George, in my opinion, that is the most beautiful piece of property in Freeport. It's right on the river, there's boat access. I would like to leave it as a park area, but if we ever got to the position where some fabulous, I don't know, hotel or whatever came to us, where we would generate a lot of sales tax or other types of tax revenue, then I think we should look at it then, but for, to give the land to an entity where we're not going to get any type of tax revenue and it won't be a park anymore, I don't agree with that.
Would you like to grab it? Mr. Kanter, I understand there's a statement at the chair regarding this item.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Here.
I did want to start by, um, giving condolences to the chair. Mayor, Mayor Bass, Mr. Keltie, City Councilmembers, my name is Larry Kanter, and I am the spokesperson for the concerned citizens of Freeport in making this statement on behalf of the CCF Fundship. At the October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one regular City Council meeting, a presentation was made proposing development of Hispanic culture and events center located on Second Street. In the Friday, October twenty-ninth edition of the BACS newspaper, there was a front page article regarding proposal to build a multicultural center on the site of the former Freeport Community House off of Second Street. Then, at the November first, twenty twenty-one regular City Council meeting, only fifteen days after the original proposal, an item appeared on the meeting agenda for discussion and possible action to instruct the city attorney to remove development restrictions from property in the Texas Parks and Wildlife Open Recreation Program. Tonight's agenda item fourteen is to begin discussing any possible action to remove the development restrictions from this property in the Texas Parks and Wildlife Open Recreation Program. This raises many questions. Why is it that the October eighteen Freeport City Council agenda item referenced a Hispanic culture and events center when the BACS article eleven days later referenced a multicultural center? Why is there such a rush to take action to remove development restrictions on city park property, facilitator project, which has no specific plans or budget? Why has there been no discussion about rebuilding the Freeport Community House as originally intended by city leaders when the old Community House building was demolished? Would not a new Freeport Community House building serve as an event center for all citizens? Wouldn't it be prudent for a decision of this magnitude, which would affect all citizens of Freeport for decades to come, to be decided by Freeport taxpayer voters? Would it not also be prudent to hold public hearings and send certified notification to adjacent property owners before removing these development restrictions on park property? Should not the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department of Texas be made aware of the opinions of the citizens of Freeport before making such a decision? City government is entrusted with stewardship of the taxpayers and the city's most important and valuable assets. The city government has a judiciary responsibility to act in good faith for the benefit of all Freeport citizens. The CCF opposes the process in which the city is taking to possibly remove city park land from its originally designated purpose until the citizens have had the opportunity to weigh in and provide the city leaders with their opinions or possible concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kanter.
We all agree.
Uh, believe Gina had a form.
I'm sorry?
Gina had a point to speak.
Oh, please. Yes, ma'am. Just turn it into beta code.
Hi, my name is Gina Gergi Adel, and I'm the CEO of Zory County Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. So, listening to some of the, you know, that the community's getting, I really do appreciate them coming out and telling, you know, discussing their concerns. As the gentleman spoke about as far as our income and what we didn't, what we made and what we didn't make, um, we didn't take a very big hit in twenty nineteen right when the pandemic started because we couldn't have any in-person events, so I had to be creative. I actually took a very big hit because all of my members got a whole year free membership because I didn't feel right going to these people and asking for a membership when we were already struggling. So, just to kind of air that out. I have applied for five oh one C three. I've actually reached out to one of our members, which has actually done the paperwork for me. So, that's what we were going to operate through with this multicultural center. This has actually been a dream from the very beginning. I wanted to have this enabled and I was looking around, I've actually been talking to HGAC, they said for Zory County would benefit for a multicultural center, right? I told them my idea, they wanted to set up some meetings with me in, in one of those facilities in Houston that does the same thing. I was told by Mr. Portman, before you do that, you should consider Freeport. I said, it's too sound. I mean, I would love it here. It would, it would be nice to have something here, but it's too sound. So, we then started talking about Freeport needs an attraction. Freeport needs something. There's nothing here for people to come, come to. I talked to businesses here that struggle. They don't have people that come here to Freeport to give them business. There's a lot of struggling businesses. We need something. As far as a community center, this is something that I wanted to put into, into this facility. It's a multicultural center. It was never a Hispanic center. It's never been mentioned. When I spoke to every single one of you, I've actually met with, I said, I want a multicultural center because you know what? The city is, the city needs something to bring our citizens together, okay? I want this for our community. I want this for our younger generation. And then, we had a meeting with Tim Kiltie and Ed Garcia and Mingo. I brought my developers. I brought people, because this is what Tim told me, I want a grocery store. I brought you a grocery store. I brought you the developer that said he will build a grocery store. You wanted housing, he would build the housing. So, all of this in this one property that they said that would generate tax revenue, and it's going to come from the retail stores that he's going to build and the grocery store. He has now getting all of his financials together so he can present this to you guys. And I told you I would set up a meeting with you and me and the mayor. This was just going all together because we wanted to lift, it's never even a project if we don't have this lifted. You don't even give me the opportunity to show, to show you the master plan. You know? Thank you for allowing me to be here. Thank you for allowing me to talk. But my heart is here because this is my home, and I can call this my home because I grew up here on Avenue H. Do I want something for the city? Yes, I do. I know the businesses struggle here. They don't want to have to go to Lake Jackson. They don't want to have to go to these other places. I want something here. And if that's not what the community wants, you're right. Let's let the community talk about it. Let's let the community own it. I'm all for that because if the community doesn't want this here, I want this built somewhere because I want something for our younger generation. I want something as a community center, as they said, it would be a community center. I want to start up your boardwalk. I want to do something for Freeport. I'm fine if the community doesn't want it here. No hard feelings. If they want something different, that's fine. I'm telling you what I, I wanted to do for the city. It, I'm nobody's enemy either. I, I just wanted to bring this project to you guys. If you don't want it, if the community doesn't want it, I understand, but I'm bringing retail. It's not just for nonprofit entity, I'm bringing retail. I'm bringing retail stores. This guy is going to bring his financials. He said he's ready to build, he's been ready. He's given you a grocery store, they own chains of grocery stores, and you'll get to meet them. But I hope you guys do not make the decision that I'm trying to, to start this big thing with no money. I struggled, I struggled a lot through the pandemic. I, I worked hard every single day, held good businesses with SBA funding, and I did receive some SBA funding to help me get where I'm at now, so I can. HGAC calls me and says, I want, I want you, I want you to help us, and we'll, we'll give you into this big grant that they're doing because we want, we want to help you and pay you do what you do with these other businesses. And I was going to take that money and I was going to try to hire somebody to help me work Freeport because I believe in the businesses here. And I've never turned my back on them, and I've never, whether they're Hispanic or white, they're black, whether they're white, I don't turn my back on anybody. I help everybody. So, I do appreciate you guys allowing me to talk, and I would hope that you would let me bring the developers to you to present the project. If you want the community to decide, I want what the community wants, not what I want. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Keltie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to give you a little background, in the past, the city received grant funding from the Texas Parks and Wildlife Program for park improvements.
One second. Babe, can we put this map on the screen?
Uh...
Is it under?
Part of the pack, no, no map. That's fourteen, I'm on the alien. Anyway, go ahead, turn, work on that.
So, as I say, in the past, the city received grant funding from the Texas Parks and Wildlife Program, the park improvements around the, around the east end, the west side of the river, and in so doing, committed the city to leave that land as, as park open space recreational land forever. Now, there is a process for removing that designation, but it is a process, which includes replacing the land taken out with other land that is suitable. Recently, the City Council approved an agreement with the ISD to swap the land that was involved in the fifty-year lease, the land swap lease agreement with the ISD for the land where the baseball and softball items are, right there, uh, east of the school property. And in so doing, also agreed to take that particular piece of land, uh, which is the area that jumps down from the river, west of Razzasland, Razzasland. We agreed to take that place out, and we do have a survey of that particular property. In addition, the, the EDC has had some discussions, discussions regarding development both on the west end of the river and in the area where the old Freeport Community House park used to be located. Primarily, their discussion was limited to the land south of the levee, but recently, the Zory County Hispanic Chamber made a proposal for the development of much of that area, and in, in order to make any of that happen, any kind of development that's not specifically recreational in nature, the land would have to come out of that Texas Parks and Wildlife Program. So, what I'm, what council, I'm asking for tonight is action to take land out of the Texas Parks and Wildlife Program, and in your packet, there's actually a map, the mayor bass has asked me to bring it up the screen, and I'm sorry that it's not on the screen for the public, but I can't pass it out and copy. Please, I'd like you to do that.
Any other comment?
Please.
Um, I just wanted, really probably know that this was what, at the last meeting, everybody was in, that was in attendance, we brought this up, and the, the sticking point was the specifics of the ordinance in terms of the boundaries, and I had a chance to sit down with Mr. Keltie about that, and he drew up the map, and I'm not sure if this is the map that you're presenting here tonight, Mr. Keltie.
Yes, it is the map that you, that you have for discussion, consideration.
But let me also have one other thing here before you do go with the piece of that. Is that this particular, um, agenda item was never intended to be for, what is for any specific developer? Let me be crystal clear about this.
Are this ever going to be what?
This particular agenda item about this space was never intended for any specific development project. So, I want to be crystal clear with this, the whole spirit of this particular deal was, well, it wasn't just the spirit at all. We were required to because we already had the agreement with the, with school board in terms of the land slot, but the opportunity to help prepare this, this space for future development and to allow the city to invite many developers with the best ideas and the best background and the best financial standing, uh, was, was the whole point of trying to get specific about the areas that we want to open up. And the areas that we want to open up, which you and I went through, um, on the river here on this space, shown on that map, are those that, that make the most sense as it relates to the master plan on the wall. I want to make sure that that's clear so that nobody is confused that the passage of this is in any way endorsing any particular developer or any particular development. Though I appreciate everybody's comments, I don't want the public to misunderstand that this is specifically for any one developer.
I must, I must point out that just taking out a Texas Parks and Wildlife does not preclude the city from continuing to use any of the land for recreational space, although we have waiting to bring the school without it today. We are planning to invest in the, in the trail along, along the river, so, but it's fate that remain, um, as well.
Well, that was your question that I had, if we have any comments on that, is that I understand that before there can be any development on that particular property, that it has to be taken out of the Texas Parks and Wildlife Grant, but my concern has always been the levee to the river and now looking at the map, the levee to the municipal park. Could we picture a substantial investment of money into the levee, walkway or runway, runway from Mario, walkway from me? But if we're going to take that out of the Texas Parks and Wildlife Grant, is it going to be able to be sold to a developer? And monies that we have just put into, golf money, our money, if we pay his taxes and sales tax and property tax, is that going to benefit the developer or not? I understand on the big, big parts of the land that are highlighted in orange on the top is maybe passing around, uh, one section is a piece of property that was... One section is a piece of property that Mr. Wong owns. And the other section is, I think, the old nine hole of the old Freeport property.
You talking about the area of the levee?
No, I'm talking about the area in orange. And here, he wanted to just to see the own property. I don't even have my map there. All right, am I wrong? Am I running around? He said, good, that's them levees. Yes, no, but not.
Yes.
Yes, all right. So that's my issue. So you're saying that that grassland court and then over here is potential, no problem. So what I was pointing at, ladies and gentlemen, we made that map, is to this side, the right side of the orange area. And y'all told me the orange area is a ball field.
Yes.
Okay. So that has to be not. Well, once again, still here is my concern about the property along the levees. But in regards to the other property, you know, I think that is something that we are going to develop it one way or the other. It's going to have to be resolved. You know, Pocahontas Democrat. But y'all elected us to make decisions. And if we make decisions that are not wrong, I mean, if not, y'all don't like y'all. Just kick us out of office. But we're representatives of people. And so we'll make the decisions that we think are important. I do believe this administration has listened to the individuals or to the folks out there as much as possible can. But ultimately, some decision has to be made. Mr. Cundiff has a comment? Yes, sir.
You're also taking away a valuable boat ramp that a lot of people...
Tito, yes, sir.
And I think that's a valuable asset in Freeport. As far as this center goes, there's a lot of free. There's a lot of unused space in Freeport that different things could be built on. But the waterfront, there again, has some particular things like boat ramps. You've got a lot of recreational fishermen that use that. And that actually needs to be enlarged and improved, not in a way.
Thanks, sir.
I have a question too.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Well, it's not a question. And I understand you probably get tired of me. But, you know, I'll definitely answer some of that.
Whoa, 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 what did I say about assumptions?
Oh, assumptions, excuse me. Right side, I'm a veteran, but later. Okay. With all due respect, you know, the CC, the concerned citizens of Freeport put in the comment about that property as well. And I think that, yes, having a community center there would be lovely. I understand we want, there is lots of other property around town that, I mean, hotels can go on if we get something big or development. But, you know, that's a park, y'all. And we need nice, someplace nice for our community and for people to walk around in. I'd even like to have a dog park over there. But a hotel sitting there or making it the river walk right there. I don't know. There's other parts of the river that we can do things. Even downtown Freeport, over by where the bank used to be, where Dog's office is. You know, like where the boys' and girls' club is next to Western Seafood. You know, have a hotel there like they have on, you know, Pima. And then you can have boats flying up and down there. But that's, you know, I think it's going to get real dangerous with more activity right there as far as people on the river. I do want to say, I'm for Freeport development. I think in which way, we can do it. But also, we can't develop on every piece of property we own, we have around here. We need to keep some of it. It's my opinion. And what about the property next to the bank? I mean, next to City Mall? I thought y'all were going to build that up. And nothing's happened, you know, by the boat more than enough. I don't know who owns that.
Well, the city of Freeport built, sorry.
Okay. You know, the boat over there, we must have some type of little nice park that we've always had across the river. And he mentioned the boats. I sit outside and watch all the boats go by every day. Y'all love those vessels. But anyway, I just think that moving too fast on decisions, especially this park and wildlife plan, that just came up really quick. It just hit us like boom. And so I think it's a, the community needs to vote. We need to talk about this more instead of just making a real fast decision on this type of land. But anyway, that's my thought.
That's not your fault. But, you know, I do want to emphasize that, oh, your thought.
My thought.
I'm sorry. Maybe city council, if I'm just hearing it. You know, it's not that's your thought. But that's a good thought. But good God almighty, I just thought.
Ma'am, I just...
It's my fault that I got off thought. The thinking of the thought that she had, no fault.
Ma'am, I just want to point out that...
You can go get down there. I was just trying to be funny.
I did prepare a resolution for this. It's not in the council packet.
Yeah.
But I think that helps to eliminate some of the confusion. And the resolution is this specifically, that there's no particular project or decision with regard to the future of the property. It just removes the restriction, but allows consideration in the future of any other development or get rid of the boat ramp or any of that would come back to council in a separate action. And also, the resolution included that any development, the finding by the council that any development in the future would ensure that the citizens continue to have full access to the river. So I don't know if that would end the package, but I want to point out that that was the resolution prepared. It probably wouldn't be in the motion.
Thank you. Now, I found my thought. Ladies and gentlemen, we have to proceed with some of this because part of the contractual duty that we have on the land swap with BISD. So we're going to have to swap that particular land or at least move for that to be removed from the Texas Parks and Wildlife Grant Protection Program because of the contracts that I've been able to do. I think that the ideal is to potentially, if we're looking at developing the forty, seven point four eight acres that you would do it contemporaneously and not in a piecemeal process. However, there will have to be some action taken. And we have a timeframe. And right off the top of my head, I can't remember the timeline for the transfer, because how many days?
Two seventy.
Two hundred and seventy days. Two hundred and seventy days that we do have to make the contractual transfer of the baseball field property with the property that we have now swapped and owned down on Neil Black, excuse me, voted immediately.
And the process will take several months for us, so we need to get started.
So in that particular situation, Mr. Duncan, if somebody makes the motion to proceed with that particular transfer, is that factually specific enough for that motion to pass tonight?
Yes.
And that is leaving the boat ramp part out and move forward with the school?
Correct. I mean, it's not degenerate in general. So any councilman can make a motion for all or part.
I make a motion for part. I want to just let Gina agree. I think somebody else brought up. I want to hear from the public. I want to hear what the public has to say about removing the rest of the park. The rest of the park from the park.
You started a motion.
Yeah, that's my motion. Partial, excluding the...
The ISD property.
Yes.
Is necessary.
All right, so we have a motion, Captain Brimis, to move forward with this particular removal of the property or at least a request for the Texas Parks and Wildlife to move that property from the grant run. More specifically, that's the property that is allocated in a contract that was recently completed between Bradford and French Forest District and the city of Freeport. Is that correct?
Yes.
And leave the other amount out.
Yes.
We have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
We have a second from Council McCain. Further discussion on that particular motion?
Does anyone have a comment there?
Go ahead, sir.
Council needs to know, and the public needs to know that, yes, there is a timetable on the school board, number one. But if we are going to delay any inclusion of the park space or the open land space here that has previously hosted the community house and currently hosts that boat ramp and also includes some of the municipal park space at the cul-de-sac of the harbor that these developers are not going to act on, presenting, I mean, you know, to the city. And we may lose them. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands that if we lose opportunities, and that's all we're looking to try to do when I brought this up, was to make sure that we were aware that we can present ourselves, that many more opportunities. So when somebody says, hey, I don't want this to be a nonprofit location. I get that. But there's more than one way to skin the cat. But if there are other developers who come in and say, hey, we want to put in that hotel. We do want to put in that housing in there and then, of course, the additional retail and office space and say, hey, we'll have office space that any business can render us. But make my mistake about it. What's happening in all of Freeport is highest and best use. And it's our responsibility to making sure that the highest and best use of our available space to help increase tax revenue is just that. And so by passing the full, the full space that was outlined by Mr. Kelty and the staff of innovation, then we afford ourselves that opportunity. The concern of whether or not we have public input going forward, I think we can still have that moment. But I think we lose out on that opportunity of many other developers coming in and looking at this space and bringing material presentations that are meaningful and that have adequate financing and comprehensive plans that do, that maximize the highest and best use of that whole piece of water. And as I mentioned, I did it in private with you, that the concern was, oh, well, we don't want to lose that boat ramp or we don't want to lose that splash pad or we don't want to use, we don't want to lose the recreational area where people stretch out and the kids play on the little playground set. The back is all modular. It doesn't need to be fixed in any place. The architects and the urban planners that do these kinds of developments in these spaces on waterfronts, not hidden away in some neighborhood, but on the waterfronts. That's our premium real estate there that will help maximize ourselves and will do the highest and best use of that whole space. We, if we open that up, we're doing the right thing for Freeport.
Mr. Green, why don't you give them your EDC property? You have eight acres on the river waterfront.
That's a very good comment. And if I might respond to the, at the risk of being a back and forth, I'd like to respond to that. That's a good question.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, can you respond to it as quickly as he said it?
Not much.
And, no. Mr. Mayor?
Here it is. Now, but here's a response. I'll kick aside. Because if the eight acres isn't a good piece of property, there's no doubt about it. But this property is so much better for development. Why? Because the elevation of the land, the topography of the land, has more flat space from the wet side to the waterfront. Okay? And that is why it is actually better. Now, there's also more buildings and obstructions and undulations in the property of the eight point eight acres. This right here is one margin of space. It actually is also location wise in conjunction with right, really close proximity wise to the municipal park. So when developers had come to the EDC, they talked about it in three phases. They talked about this particular space being the phase one. Why is it the most attractive space to developers, period? Not the eight acres. And remember, the...
Did you show them?
Oh, yeah. The eight acres was presented as well. But they said, no, this is the better one. Because of the frontage on Second Street on top of that. Okay? So it was the whole piece of property in terms of the river frontage, the frontage to the one of the main corridors being into downtown. And they also liked the idea of the master plan. So they basically saying, hey, this is, we're going to maximize the use of this river frontage. And we like the fact that we can then potentially move to phase two, which would be the municipal park. And phase three would be the EDC space. And that was a conversation for those developers who's looked at all three locations. So, yes, we did look at the EDC. The EDC eight acres hasn't offered. But this is the crown jewel. This is the one that's going to maximize and be the catalyst for the river. And just to make sure we are aware of that.
Thanks, sir. There is a motion on the floor. Mr. Hayes?
One question. Y'all remember Mr. Wong right over there? We sold it, the city sold him that property. And it's still sitting there. Nothing's been done. That could be the same thing if y'all transfer that land out. Exactly the two turnpits. Exactly what?
How could it be?
No, it's not. It's exactly the same.
I'm the person behind it. That's the problem.
Very good. Hold on. We have, I am calling the motion, calling the questions. So the hand load, we have a motion and we have a second to modify the ordinance to only remove the land dedicated to land swap transfers. All those in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries for one. Thank you. I have the number fifteen. Now, somebody bet me if we made it best nine fifty, I'll get ten dollars. I have the number fifteen, discussion possible action regarding the ordinance and everything procedures and deadlines for items requested by one or more council members to be placed on the city council agenda. Mr. Finney, sir.
Is this my agenda item here?
Mark, you go ahead and take the room if you'd like to.
Well, I'm happy to at least give my two cents early on.
Okay, sir.
Simply put, I want to make sure that that there's a clearly outlined process and procedure for every councilman who is of equal footing here in terms of putting things on the agenda to be afforded that process of timetables so they can put items on the agenda instead of having, I guess, either request denied or delayed unlike for there to be a clearly outlined timetable. We had this problem here in the EDC recently. And so finally, we started to refine a process where there was a deadline for councilmen and board members to put their requests for the agenda and items on the agenda. And so they would give the city enough time to facilitate, put them in the agenda. And then we would have a chance to review it prior to, for doing an update with no errors and updating the agenda. But right now, there is no procedure. And that's the problem. It's kind of, well, we get it Friday at five o'clock and, you know, not sure who's putting what on here. There's not any real review by council. So I think by having this process, you'll have a more engaged council. And that's a benefit to President Chulak.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
The charter, home rule charter that we have right in the city of Freeport really had no specific guidelines on this issue. It's been that way for a number of years. Believe it or not, you know, I'm not the emperor of Freeport. That charter doesn't give me that authority as mayor. I am just the titular head for the presiding member of the city council. And I don't have a right to veto. If somebody passed something they didn't like, I can't say, no, that's not going to happen. Uh, and I don't have a right to veto if somebody passed something they didn't like, I can't say, no, that's not going to happen. But what has happened historically is the mayor has listened to the will of the council folks who they've spoken to him and they've asked to get an item to be put on there or that the citizens have requested something that needed to be on there, it was put on there, it was discussed with Mr. Kelty uh or the city managers before him and the mayor and then it was put on. Uh, Mr. Penny is correct that we can no longer have a process where on Thursday or Friday before the meeting, if we put all this upon administration and Betty uh to come up with memos in regards to agenda items, because if you look at the meeting minutes uh and the agenda packet, there's always generally seeking a memo or recommendation prepared by a department head or by Mr. Kelty describing uh what was actions that they requesting as well as whether or not they recommend that process. So there are two ordinances attached to that. One, I think that we all should agree upon at least one aspect, is that from here on out uh that uh a timeline will be established that if there is an item to be put on the agenda or request to be put on the agenda, and that's where we have the question about these two competing ordinances. But it must be done in writing to the city manager on before noon and on Tuesday prior to the meeting. That gives plenty of time for the administration to um figure out a memo. It also gives the city, a city council person wants that agenda item on the agenda that they can provide the documentation is needed to make it done so. So I think there's no disagreement there. Um, where there may be an issue is, we should be able to put it on the agenda. And tonight is really kind of a good example uh of why I'm proposing uh my particular quartered agenda, which is the ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash two six five zero. Because in section three oh nine, meetings of the city council, it talks about the city secretary and the direction of the mayor, city manager shall be responsible for complying with the notice provisions of open meeting acts for all regular meetings, okay? A regular meeting may be canceled or the location changed by the mayor. An emergency meeting or special meeting may be called by the mayor or any two of the other members of the city council. And so that's the part that I want to focus on. Most cities, and I, I did some, my work, because I've always asked everybody to be factual and so I've actually checked a number of cities, large and small. And what they generally require in regards to an item to be on the agenda is the city manager may place an item on the agenda, the mayor may place an item on the agenda, and a council member who has a co-sponsor may put the item on the agendas. And what's that's the, the purpose of that is to, one, I think, make folks talk to get together and potentially build a consensus before it comes to the council and it comes in front of you folks to make a decision. But also it stops, uh, it could prevent uh one particular council person from controlling an agenda. And let me give you a crazy example, and guess what, crazy, in other cities, not the city of Freeport. There was a councilman recently in a city that was following along the lines of our elected governor that said that uh they wanted to put an item on the agenda to remove a book from a library. Regardless of political action for that, you relying on one council person to put that up on an agenda item when it was clearly, in my opinion, unconstitutional. But if you have that person have to speak to another council member, it's not that hard, there's four council members and a mayor and a mayor can be a co-sponsor too. It makes you think a little bit first before you do it, because maybe, just maybe, it's not the best idea to do that. And you have somebody to talk it down. Um, and so it kind of puts an incumbency upon the individual to at least articulate their position to one of their brothers or sisters that are on council. So there are two competing motions tonight, gentlemen, or two competing ordinances. One ordinance is uh that, is, which is ordinance number one, version number one. Although I still think that it needs changes in regards to the special meetings, which is number two. Because a special meeting or an emergency meeting is clearly called for a specific purpose, therefore I don't think you need to have co-sponsors to get that on the agenda. Uh, but the beating motions are, one, any request made by a council member for an item to be placed on the agenda of a regular council meeting must be made in writing to the city manager on before noon and on Tuesday prior to the meeting. And then the major difference being on the second version is any request made by the mayor, the city manager or two council members for an item to be placed on the agenda of a regular council meeting must be made in writing to the city manager on before noon on Tuesday prior to the meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, um, during Mr. Brimage's tenure and in my tenure certainly, I don't think there was ever any censorship. There may have been things pulled off because there was some, uh, in my opinion, some additional information needed before it could be logically brought in front of the council and or folks and be explained, but there's never been any censorship. So therefore, while I do this readily, uh, I do have the authority to do so, I make the motion that we approve what, sir? Why are you touching me? I know, I just didn't get it. I make the motion that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash two six five zero, version number two with the changes that Mr. Duncan had to make as legal counsel to number two, which discusses special, special meetings. Do you have a motion?
I'm gonna go ahead and discuss why I'm gonna vote against it before we vote, uh, because just like example tonight, obviously I'll have no allies on this council, so I'll not be able to put anything on the agenda, so I'm gonna vote against it tonight.
Well, I appreciate that, but there hasn't been a second yet, so assuming you're not seconding the motion?
Absolutely not.
Is there a second to the motion? Before that? Don't, don't sell yourself short. That's second. Alright, so we have a motion and a second, let's talk about it.
So, um, I'll talk about the first one, I'll talk about your second point.
Well, let's talk about the motion that's made, which is...
Correct, but you're, I'm gonna talk about the motion that was just made and the, and the pitfalls of it. You described it pretty well. You talked about um, you was making sure that the council could have consensus beforehand. Well, the risk on that, sir, is a walking quorum. So how do we, how do we delineate that?
Do they take sponsor and co-sponsors too, which the quorum does not make?
I understand.
So I want you to be very careful, look at that, I'm not saying that you have to consult everybody and get a permission from everybody to put something on the agenda, you just got to be, Troy, I'd like to make a very rapid...
Yes, sir. Imagine, very real possibility, that you have an idea and you bring it to Mr. Kane, and Mr. Kane's like, I don't like that idea. Now you go over to Mr. Mariano, he's like, hey, here's my idea. Does that, does that pose a quorum that you've talked about in an agenda though?
I don't believe it, right?
It does, right?
I don't think it does.
It does not? Does our city attorney believe that is a, a walking quorum?
Okay, so anytime that a quorum, three or more people talk about city business, that will, that will make a quorum. Um, there is a case where, a very famous case, where they were asking about generally putting things on the agenda. Uh, I think, talking about if you say, hey, I want to put this on the agenda, do you agree? That in and of itself does not violate the rule on quorum. The, the, actually, the famous case, they were actually talking about, can we put this on the agenda? And when we get it on the agenda, let's get this guy to come say this and let's, and you say that and I'll say that. And then they were actually deliberating and planning how they were going to present everything uh in the, in the meeting. So I, I think the fact of trying to get people to agree to call a special meeting or put a specific item on the agenda, if you don't discuss the merits of it, right? Which may be difficult, because if you're a council member trying to sell it, you might have to discuss the merits. So you'd have to tread carefully if you talk to two different, if you want to put something on the agenda and the first guy says no and then you go put your sales pitch to the third guy, you would have to be very careful to make sure you don't violate the rule on that.
This is a short answer, isn't it?
Maybe.
But what have you seen in other cities, Mr. Duncan?
Before we answer that question, Mr. Duncan, I would like to say that Freeport is a very unique community. Like Mr. Brimage brings up a good point.
We ought to see you go out and make more friends.
Well, here I am in the middle. The general practice among the cities that I looked at is that it would require two...
Be new friends?
Two council members.
So the general consensus, once again, we have flown for years without this, but the general consensus, Regret pattern, Regret pattern conduct in other cities is the city manager, mayor, and city council member with a co-sponsor who's named and on the agenda. And that's the motion, that's before you, the motion is second.
We have a second?
We do have a second, Councilman Kane.
I would say the last comment I had on this was that the spirit of my uh request for this particular item so that there would be some clarity and clear definition of it. That said, uh, I love you.
Uh, all those in favor, uh, Councilman Mariano, any questions or comments? All those in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Alright, motion carried four to one, thank you, gentlemen. I think it will be a good thing. Uh, item number sixteen, consideration and possible action approving the full compliance review of all current three A agreements through the city and the EDC. Mr. Kelty, I'll tell you, I did see a memo on this, is that correct, sir?
Yes, sir.
Uh, this was a request brought up by Mr. Penny. Uh, Mr. Penny, uh, your request, Mr. Kelty will fill in, we're due your questions.
Alright, may I make a comment on the, the spirit of what this was actually?
Sure, absolutely.
I want the public to, I guess the facts is left already, sadly. This is really just as a function of saying, uh, if we want uh true transparency, then, you know, as uh our previous president would say, uh, Russia, if you're listening, I would say, not that they, uh, not the CCF is Russia. But if the CCF is listening, then, you know, I would have encouraged them as well outside of the taxpayer dollars, to make this request as well and make their findings to the council. And that's all I have.
Thanks, sir.
I do have, do have one thing to say. In, in the memo identified the four three A agreements that they have direct in the city. Um, one with Mr. Wong, it's really gonna be challenging to to enforce, because there's not a lot of enforcement requirements. Um, but the one that I do want to, did want to bring up was three A agreement with Mr. Kundif. And I had sent Mr. Kundif a email about two months ago, letting him know that his three A agreement that he's been working on is in fact um due to expire in the middle of December. Um, and he has, in fact, um, under the terms of that three A agreement, there were certain things that he was supposed to do, including put in um water and sewer drainage along the sidewalks and street lighting for the development of the houses along the river. Um, and he has finished with everything except for the sidewalks and the lighting. Um, he has ordered the lighting, however, there's some issues with um, delivery times, I mean, I know that there's a lot of things that have been delayed from a delivery standpoint. Um, and I did meet with him today, he did ask me to present to council an amendment, an extension of ninety days uh for his three A agreement, um, and then also some discussion regarding the sidewalks as well. But I will be bringing that back to the next council meeting, um, for council, for your consideration. Um, and then there were two other three A agreements, one with the EDC, um, that is being processed and is on track. And one that, Realty World is off the tracks and in litigation at this point, so. That's all I have, may I?
Mr. Kelty, did you contact, I guess, our city attorney and the, and Mr. Duncan to be aware of any and all EDC three A agreements?
I'm sorry, say again?
Were you able to contact Mr. Duncan to find out the, the full extent of the EDC agreements as well?
The three A agreement between the city and EDC?
No, sir. Uh, any active EDC three A agreements? Is this the complete, I guess, the question?
The three A agreements are generally approved by city council, sir.
Okay. Uh, any other outstanding agreements that, you know, the city of the EDC is actively I guess, that are still active? And if not, this is the, this is the conference of listeners?
I think that's talking to Mr. Duncan.
Okay.
Are these the active that you're aware of, the four we wanted to report that you're aware of, sir?
Yes, sir.
What else we have on this particular item? Alright, hearing none, I would say that item number sixteen, no action is taken?
Oh, I'm sorry, we're looking for an action, I'll say it like this, to make the uh a motion so that the city in fact does uh review these agreements and making sure that they are compliant. And that will report for us in the next council meeting, if that's enough time.
Review these, these four that we have here?
These four and any others that uh may actually end up being revealed here during the course between now and maybe the next quarter or thereafter.
Were you aware that there are other three A agreements?
Uh, I'm not sure yet.
Is anybody aware of any three A agreements other than the four that are listed here? There's some council attorneys or city managers or Betty or Kathy or Mayor Barnett, anybody? I don't know. So I don't know what you want to do. But I think he's, Jeff, I think he's answered in regards to the four three A agreements that he's... And I think that there's sufficient information that you're to pay aware of, I would say bring it to him and let's put it back on the agenda.
Fair enough, we'll do that, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alright, so no action taken on item number sixteen. Number seventeen is discussion regarding an ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash two six four eight to require our city council, public board members to disclose all current real estate assets in Georgia County held in personal name, immediate manager's name, business name, office, entities owned or partnered um in Texas, any and all business agreements with any other board or council member, any and all the permission contracts with the city. Mr. Kelty is a...
Mayor, I can, I can say a lot of times, because everybody here has a one-liner, I will get my attorney to put everything together if it was convenient, and I'll submit it to the council, I don't have anything to hide. It'd be a little simple, you know, they, they could actually drop down this one line and give it to you tonight, it'll take me a while, but I will definitely get my assets to you.
What about other board members?
But don't run off to other board members to do it, to, to, to attack me, just like, Duncan, if you know of any uh three A agreements that I have open, say it now, don't wait till next week, I mean, say it now.
I understand, I'll be very, very respectful.
Right, I, I it has, and that, but that, that's their point, that's their dynamic rules point, Mayor.
But Troy, here's the point.
You want me to not get upset, but you let these two clowns continue to do their tricks?
First of all, be respectful, respect.
Well, I'm done.
Hold on a second, Troy.
I'm done.
You're done, then you get your butt out of the damn building, because, but you're not that way.
Yes, sir, I will, I will.
There you go.
Thank you. You, you advise me to get out of the building, Mayor, thank you, sir.
That's it, just sit back down.
Nope, 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 that's what you really want, that's what you really want. I'll go out here to the facts and I'll put my video on and you deal with the integrity of the city. Because him and him were drinking during the investigation together, I have it on video, it'll be on the facts tomorrow, it'll be on Facebook tomorrow, drinking a bottle of turkey one-on-one together, laughing, cheering, good times and good friends, good times and good friends, laughing and eating every one of them.
Tony one-on-one at your restaurant, sir.
Laughing and eating every one of them.
You're out of order, you're out of order.
How'd you get each and every one of them?
You're out of order. Yes, it's...
Hold on a second, wait a second. I have not seen the video. I don't know what's on the video, I don't get the thing what's on the video. If people are out socializing on their own, if there's discussion about an investigation on the video, while y'all are socializing and drinking, then that's a problem, but if you're just out drinking and you're not doing anything else but that, we've gotta get past this. Good God almighty.
It's the devil, Mayor.
No, because now I have a friend that's probably very mad at me right now. And that's hurtful, because I appreciate Troy and I appreciate his family. And I have stood by him when he has been attacked and I have stood by Mr. Penny when you have been attacked, and y'all both can't see the forest for the trees. You know what?
Deep breath.
We're done. I understand, I'm, I'm, I'm following the meeting close.
That's sick.
Anybody want to come do something about it? I live in thirteen twenty-six West Ross Street.